For to order and I'm gonna call for a roll call.
Certainly, Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron.
Present.
Ms. Tabachnik.
Here.
Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
Ms. Langallis.
Here.
Mr. Kanter.
Here.
Ms. Wells. Got a nod, take the nod, and Mr. Shulman.
Here. Okay, uh, we have, uh, three members absent this evening, so, uh, all the alternates are, uh, seated, uh, for the entire meeting. Um, uh, first, uh, action is, uh, 2024, uh, dash forty-nine. This is a referral. Uh, City of Norwalk, Three Belden Avenue, licensing agreement for Fairfield County Makers Guild. Uh, report and recommend, uh, what we need to report on is, uh, whether, uh, this request from, uh, the city is consistent with the P O C D. Uh, and, uh, with that, uh, Ms. Vanashek, are you going to, uh, make the presentation?
Sure, I can do that. Thank you very much. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Jessica Vanashek. I'm the Chief of Economic and Community Development for the city. Uh, wanted to present to you this evening, uh, potential, um, license agreement with the Makers Guild, uh, to move into Three Belden Avenue. So we began, um, working with the Makers Guild, uh, last year when we learned that they were going to be, um, we that they were going to be asked to leave their existing space, which was up on Main and Linden. And the property owner in that particular location was, uh, repurposing the building and had asked them to find a new location. And so we had met with them in business development and tourism to learn more about what their practices were and more about the nonprofit organization. And they were interested in finding space, um, not specifically space that the city owned, but more just interested in finding space that they could either lease or have a license agreement in place for. Um, at that point in time, we were talking about purchasing Three Belden Avenue. Um, and at the time, the redevelopment agency had actually been leasing, um, Three Belden Avenue, which is the building located directly beside One Belden Avenue, which is the Belden Library, from the First Taxing District. And, um, during that time, the city actually was able to acquire Three Belden Avenue using ARPA funding. Um, and primarily, um, for two reasons, um, more so one, which would be the support of the library expansion project and the library renovation project, knowing that the footprint was likely to increase or potentially increase for the library. And so we wanted to be able to purchase the adjacent, uh, that adjacent lot. And the second reason is because there was a lot of conversation about parking, uh, for the library. And so being able to acquire that particular lot allowed us to not only think about increasing the potential footprint of the building, but also having some additional parking spaces. And just to note, the library at this point in time has the library parking lot, um, has parking, uh, in the Eagles parking lot, thirty parking spaces. We also have parking spaces at Three Belden. And in addition to that, we also, um, of course, uh, purchased a portion of Eleven Belden as well for parking. So, um, the conversations developed over time with the Makers Guild, and we learned more about the fact that they work directly with the community. They're a membership-based, um, organization, again, nonprofit, and they offer different workshops to the public and they allow the public access to different tools that folks may not have in their homes. So three D printers and laser printers, um, in addition to different, um, soldering tools and different woodworking tools and even everything down to sewing machines. And it not only offers public access to these tools, but it also gives them a point of mentorship and, um, development where they have the ability to go in and learn how to do all of these skills, uh, based on the different memberships being able to and different members being able to teach them how to do this. The other thing, um, is that it really offers a community and a social environment where folks get together on different evenings and they're able to participate in this effort. And so as we started to learn more about the Makers Guild and we learned that we were going to be acquiring Three Belden, um, we asked them what space they would need and what was required, and they indicated to us that they would need around seven or eight hundred square feet, and we were able to identify in Three Belden a space for them to be able to use. Now, the interesting thing is that they didn't have a home and they were really worried about losing membership since April. And so we actually allowed them to use the Three Belden Avenue space to hold free public workshops. And the free public workshops they've been holding, um, weekly for months now, and so they've been holding them, uh, between six o'clock and ten o'clock at night. Some of them are based on jewelry making, some of them are based on woodworking tools, and they've been seeing between twenty and thirty people go to these free workshops, um, on a regular basis. So we know that from a proof of concept, um, that the community room in Three Belden, which of course is the Business Development Center, is working for them. And so given the alignment with the workforce development and the entrepreneurship and the innovation and research development, um, we're bringing forward this particular license agreement for a three-year period in order to be able to, um, support the Makers Guild in coming down to the Wall Street West Avenue area. As part of the license agreement, the Makers Guild is, um, offering to hold five free public workshops each month, which also helps us with programming the Business Development Center. That center is meant to bring people in, walk-ins, and teach people all about the resources that the city offers. So it's really great to be able to have people learning about the Business Development Center and then also having access to these free workshops. I think the other thing to note is there's been some conversation and some concern about the thirty-six-month license agreement, which people, um, may have concern regarding this proposed renovation and expansion of the library. And so what we did is we worked directly with, um, building management, uh, Alan Lowe, to be able to look at the timeline of what the library, uh, renovation and expansion would take. And so thinking about developing an, uh, an RFP for an updated building facilities plan, also thinking about, um, an architectural plan that would create ninety percent, uh, design plan, and then doing an RFP to bring on a construction contractor. And so that period of time that it will take, that we're, that we believe will take, um, each of those pieces is the thirty-six months. So that is the timing of the contract. And also, um, just for reference, that the funding, the capital funding is actually in the capital budget for the proposed library expansion. Um, and that's in there for, um, twenty-seven. So the timing of all of these pieces seems to work. But tonight, um, we're not, I'm giving you background on the proposed renovation and expansion of the library because it's, uh, it seems to be that they're, um, related indirectly due to the fact that we've purchased the site, um, in consideration of that. But tonight is really just to ask for your support in, um, allowing the Makers Guild to have a license agreement for Three Belden. Um, it's about, it's just under eight hundred square feet, um, knowing that the P O C D speaks to workforce development and innovation, research and development and entrepreneurship.
Okay, our, um, uh, job, uh, this evening, if you choose to accept it, uh, would be to, uh, have one of our members make a motion, um, that, uh, uh, finds this, uh, contract um, is consistent, uh, with the, uh, P O C D. Uh, is there anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Darius has made the motion. Galen, can I assume you second the motion?
Yes.
Okay, uh, discussion, questions?
No.
Tammy, go ahead.
Yes, hi, um, good evening, Jessica. Um, wondering, is the long-term plan for that building to somehow attach it to the library? Because I remember a couple of years ago, there was conversation about the, I believe it was Channel Twelve News, forgive me, there was some TV station that wanted to go in there and merge with the library. So what's sort of the, the long-term use?
Yeah, so you remember correctly. So at one point in time, we were talking about, um, we were talking about the TV, um, the TV organization coming into the library and having an actual space there. And so that was probably about, I would say, three or four years ago at this particular point in time. Um, those conversations have gone to the wayside just because, um, they actually created a new leadership executive team, um, that's gone in a different direction. And so we haven't had those particular conversations. I think the, the way that the city is picturing it now, um, is that we have, we have a building facilities plan that was, uh, adopted in twenty nineteen, and we have never done the architectural design for the particular building. So what we've talked about with building, uh, maintenance is that the, um, that we would create a building committee and that the city, um, would work with a vendor that's chosen through the RFP process in order to be able to update the building's facility. Originally, the building's facility that was looked at contemplated a three-hundred-person auditorium, and the building currently is fifty thousand square feet, and it also contemplated a twenty-six thousand square-foot expansion, which would put the building at seventy-seven thousand square feet. So the, you know, I think that what we're looking at now with the cost of construction is being able to, um, establish what the library needs to be in order to be able to meet community need. And that means that that, that, that contractor would update the building's facility, and that building's facility may look different than what was contemplated a couple of years ago, based on the land that the city was able to purchase over the last year, which was not the case when the original building facilities was completed. Um, and in addition to that, that contractor will also do architectural design, and that will include working with the building committee, working with the library board, and working with the community as a whole in order to be able to understand what amenities should be in that particular building, um, and building out that plan. So it's a long answer, um, to your question, but I think that where we were four years ago is a little bit different than where we are now. And partly because of that is because we've had ARPA funding at the city in order to be able to not only purchase Three Belden, but also a portion of Eleven Belden.
Okay, thank you. And so just the general maintenance of the building and care is the city's because we own it, not, it won't be the tenants.
That's right. So it is, it's currently a building, it's currently a building that is in the city's assets, um, just like many of the other buildings that are in the city. And so, um, I should note that one of the things that has been noted of concern is the, the lease agreement and the, uh, rate that goes along with that. And, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about from a city standpoint is uh, different ways in order to be able to understand what those lease agreement rates should be. And so one way of looking at it is per building, um, and understanding what the carrying costs are per building, uh, and understanding if it's a square foot cost for the, for each tenant versus looking at all of the buildings as a whole and understanding what that universal cost is and being able to understand what square footage is available for a license agreement or a lease. And so the city will be updating, um, that particular study. And, uh, one of the things that we have talked to about the, the Makers Guild with is being able to revisit that rate per square foot in order to understand if that, um, is equitable from a city standpoint. But as of today, um, it is an equitable approach, given what the other rates are that we're offering to different tenants in different buildings.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, Hannah? Um, I have actually two questions. Uh, the first question is, do the other tenants in the building have leases? And the second one is, are the two one-year renewals on the proposed lease, uh, do they require mutual agreement from both parties?
Um, so I'll take the second question first, uh, and the answer is yes for that because we want to be able to ensure that the city, we really want to line it up with the proposed renovation and expansion of the library, right? And so right now, we see that as a thirty-six-month window, and, um, therefore, we would need the Makers Guild to agree, but the city would also have to agree as well. Um, and that's just ensuring that, um, that the space remains, uh, occupied in Three Belden because it helps us in order to be able to maintain the building and offer resources to this, to the city residents, but also in addition, keep the building active and keep it vibrant for the neighborhood. Um, as far as the first question goes, um, there is the N double A C P in the building and also the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in the building. And so currently, um, what we're doing is a month-to-month agreement with both of them. They were actually tenants to the redevelopment agency. And so when the city purchased the building, um, from the First Taxing District, we took over those contracts, which are now month-to-month contracts, and we've been, um, working to be able to connect with each of those tenants in order to be able to ensure that we can do license agreement with them, license agreements with them that reflect what the Makers Guild, um, license agreement looks like.
Hey, thank you. That was very helpful. Thanks.
Uh, any other questions? All right, if not, uh, let's, um, uh, vote on this. Uh, again, this is a, uh, standard eight-twenty-four, uh, review for consistency with the P O C D. Um, all those in favor, I think we can do this with a show of hands. JJ, you'll have to come. There you go. Thank you. Um, um, all right, it looks like it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Uh, you may not be off the hook, um, if you're doing this.
That's okay.
Twenty-twenty-four dash, uh, fifty is another eight-twenty-four, uh, referral. City of Norwalk, Sixth Butler Street, uh, acquisition of property. Jessica?
Yep, that's, yep, absolutely. Um, so this is a really exciting opportunity for the city. I think the city has been interested in trying to create a second connection point through, um, to Lockwood Matthews and the Stepping Stones and the printmaking, uh, nonprofit. And so, you know, there's just a lot of growth that obviously you folks have, uh, know about, uh, in and along the wall and west, uh, area. And with the work that's going on currently, um, at the Piper, which is the, the Toll Brothers site, and also the work that's going on at the YMCA site, um, it's just a huge opportunity for us to be able to connect those, um, those particular areas to, uh, the Matthews Park in a more meaningful way. And so the city has an opportunity to be able to acquire Sixth Butler. Uh, Sixth Butler is a zero-point-one-nine-acre, uh, residential, uh, parcel. It sits, um, directly beside the gas station that is at the corner of Bu- of, um, Bu- Butler Street and, um, well, uh, West Avenue. Um, I'm being careful because I've consistently, um, confused Butler and Belden because the two of them start with, the two of them start with a B, so I want to make sure we're talking right, about the right one. Um, and so Sixth Butler is currently a vacant lot. It actually has a fence up, um, along the face of, of the lot, if you were to drive by. Um, and it's directly across the road from the Norwalk Art Space. And so we've been working really closely with a private, um, property owner in order to be able to acquire the, the property. And as I said, the primary reason for that is to increase the connectivity between, um, the residential neighborhood and the Norwalk Art Space and the nonprofit organizations that currently exist in the park. Um, and the second reason is we have an opportunity to acquire, along with the parcel, thirty parking spaces that are in the structured parking garage of the Toll Brothers lot, which helps us to be able to, um, add additional parking to our parking universe, um, in support of the nonprofits that are in the area. Um, and that's a big, that's a big thing that we've been considering because, um, if you know the YMCA lot, the city owns a small parking lot right directly beside that. And that's always been used as overflow parking for Matthews and also overflow parking the mansion and also overflow parking for the Norwalk Art Space. So this allows us to be able to bring on thirty, um, parking spaces that are inside that structured garage. Um, and I would say that the third thing that we've been looking at for this particular site is the potential increase of Farah Park, and Farah Park is attached to Matthews Park. Um, it was named after, um, the police officer. And right now, um, it is there, but we believe that we can prob- that with the purchase of the lot, we might be able to expand it a little bit more and really create an opening to that particular park. And so when it comes to alignment with the P O C D, we're talking about connectivity, mobility, um, support of pedestrian use, um, support of cyclist use. Uh, we're also talking about, um, the connectivity between the residential neighborhood and also being able to increase green space and also the tree canopy. So those would be some of the alignments, um, in addition to, to, um, those that have been identified in the memo.
Jessica, in my view, this, this one's a little more complex. Um, because, uh, this was a site that, uh, on which Pacific House, uh, was going to, uh, put up a building and, uh, provide supportive housing for previously, uh, homeless people. Uh, clearly now that project is not going to go forward, uh, at this site. Uh, has the city done anything or is the city engaged in finding, uh, another location for Pacific House, uh, so that they can, uh, go forward?
Absolutely, you know, and I don't want to, um, I don't want to put Pacific House in a position, um, of talking about things that may, they may not be in a position that they're ready to talk about things, so I'll offer the information that I believe, um, can be offered. And so, you know, we, um, had met and talked with Pacific House for, we've been talking to them, I think, since, um, January or March of, of this particular calendar year. And, um, we not only have been talking to them over the phone in numerous conversations, but we actually met with the executive director, um, as well of, uh, and, um, we talked to them about the fact that the city is extremely supportive of affordable housing, um, and that we are, um, really wanted to be able to support and help them in finding a site for affordable housing. Um, at the time that we met with the executive director, she had actually identified that this site, they don't believe that this site was actually configured, um, in a way that was supportive of the affordable housing that they were looking at. She had come on board, um, on the leadership team a little bit after they had put in the initial application. And as you know, from, um, what the site plan had originally looked like, uh, with the location of the transformer and really trying to figure out if the transformer should be sitting on the sidewalk or if it should be, um, sitting in, um, in Matthews Park, and then we would, the city would need to do an easement with Eversource. It was complicated, it was a very complicated site. And as you remember, the parcel only being zero-point-one-nine acres, um, there was no parking that was being offered onsite. It was the thirty spots in the Toll Brothers building. And so, you know, she had identified to us that they thought that they might be able to find a site that was in the Wall Street West Avenue area that was more suitable for them. Um, they continued to work with the property owner who owns Sixth Butler to be able to identify a couple of other parcels in the same neighborhood. And the opportunity there, we were really pleased with because it allowed them to actually consider almost double the number of affordable units that, um, they were originally looking at at the Sixth Butler site. So, uh, we did meet there. We also connected, um, the Pacific House with, uh, the Commissioner of, uh, Department of Housing in Connecticut in order to be able to talk about different funding streams. And the reason for that is because, um, the units that they were originally offering or proposing at Sixth Butler, they had an agreement from DOH, um, to be able to subsidize some of those units. And so we wanted to meet with the Commissioner, um, and Pacific House to ensure that, uh, the Commissioner understood that the city was interested in buying Sixth Butler, but we also had worked with Six, um, with Pacific House to identify a couple of other sites that were in the same neighborhood, that they would have an opportunity to increase the number of units there. And we wanted to make sure that the Commissioner knew that the city was behind that. And in addition to that, the city wanted to understand if DOH could offer more, um, subsidy to them in order to make sure that that project would be able to move forward if Pacific House chose to do that. And so we were pretty active, um, we were pretty active with Pacific House and DOH in order to make sure that, um, if the city was to buy Sixth Butler, that it would not impede their ability to be able to build affordable housing in the same neighborhood.
Yeah. Uh, other questions?
So you've been talking to Pacific House since January about the fact that the city might buy the way in, and, but then this came before us in February, we approved it, and we were told, oh, it's not a problem that there's only thirty parking spots and it's not on site. But in fact, they and the city thought this wasn't a good spot for them. I'm just, this.
Yeah, the timeline. Yeah, no, of course. So what happened was, um, when we originally met with Pacific House, they were under one specific leadership board, and after they had come to you in February, we had met with them again when the leadership had changed at Pacific House. And the new leadership, um, the new executive director had identified that the team had thought that this was a good site and that when, um, the new executive team had come on board, they had looked at the site and they had a number of concerns. And in addition to that, they also were, um, interested in building more units in the neighborhood. And, um, they were then working with the same property owner in order to be able to look at those other sites. Um, part of the hesitation was trying to understand the capital stack if they were to build more units. And part of that was through trying to ensure that the Commissioner of DOH would be able to support that in some way. And so we helped to facilitate those conversations to make sure that Pacific House, um, if they were not comfortable with Sixth Butler under the new leadership, that they would be able to consider those affordable units in the neighborhood.
Any other questions?
Yes, Lou, please. Um, hi again, Jessica. So a couple of questions. Um, you talk about connecting the neighborhood. There, there is a parking lot that either entrances or exits onto Butler Street that you access if you're coming into the park, sort of right before the stepping stones complex begins. Um, what are you doing to the parcel? But are you, I mean, there was a big house there that was torn down a couple of years ago. So what's the access? Is it a driveway or is it a footpath or sidewalk? What?
Yeah, that's important. Thanks for, um, asking the clarifying question. So, um, transportation, mobility and parking will actually do a design for that particular parcel. And what we are picturing is, um, a new driveway to access that, um, some additional parking spaces if there is room, um, and then the possible expansion of Farah Park. So trying to fit those three uses into that particular, um, into that particular space.
So, um, forgive me, but can you clarify what the Matthews Park is versus the Farah Park? This is versus this point-one-nine acre. If you put parking spaces on it, I mean, there's not going to be much green space left. So, um, can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, sure. So the, um, I think that the, so when you enter in off of West Avenue, you, you enter into the Matthews Park site where you see, um, the Center for Printmaking, you see the Stepping Stones Museum, and you also see the, um, Lockwood Matthews Mansion, right? So that site, we, I think we all know fairly well. When you go down Butler, um, when you go down Butler, um, driving towards Commerce, what you end up seeing on the left side is the Norwalk Art Space. On the right side, you see the gas station. Behind the gas station is Farah Park, which is like a small, narrow park that really is a pedestrian connecting point, um, that isn't very large, um, to, um, from Butler to, from Butler to the Matthews Mansion site. Um, and then you end up seeing Sixth Butler. And so Sixth Butler, thanks, Brian. Sixth Butler is that zero-point-one-nine-acre site that I was talking to you about. Um, the property owner got, the property owner actually, um, took the building down a number of years ago, as you had mentioned. And so I think, you know, what we're trying to achieve here is, um, an additional access point for not only vehicles but also pedestrians to be able to connect the Toll Brothers and the Pinnacle Building and the Waypoint Building through, um, this particular site. And so that's really the number one goal. I think that with the addition of the thirty parking spaces in the structured lot, that will really be secondary, um, because in addition to the access point that we are looking to be able to, uh, have here, as I mentioned, the goal of being able to enhance the tree canopy and be able to enhance the green space is also important. And Brian, if you move up a little bit, you can show, um, Farah Park and kind of how narrow that is and how we might be able to, um, increase that, um, working with Parks and Rec.
Okay, and with, if you're making parking spaces in the one-point-nine lot, Sixth Butler, I wouldn't call that increasing green space. And in the one-point-four-million-dollar purchase price for this, I mean, it's, is, what percent is going to Sixth Butler Properties versus the people that own the parking spaces in the garage and then Toll Brothers, I guess? And once we have.
They're all the same. So the property owner is the same. The property owner for Sixth Butler is the same property owner for the thirty parking spaces. owner for the 30 parking spaces.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And then, is the city going to have to basically pay rent for those parking spaces after you pay them for the property?
No, 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 no. We will have, so the, the 30 parking spaces that are in the structured parking garage will be part of the city's parking asset. And we will be able to have those parking spaces as part of our parking universe of the asset that we own. So, there'll be no payment that is required to give to the property owner or to Toll Brothers. Those 30 parking spaces are actually deeded to that particular property with the purchase, of the purchase of 1.4 million.
Okay. And how did they arrive at the sale price of this property?
Yep. So we, we looked at, we looked at properties in and around the area that have sold. We also had a comparable when we looked at 1517 Chestnut, where we know that Spinnaker purchased the 60 parking spaces for us. We actually were looking at the 30 parking spaces and the cost of construction for those 30 parking spaces. And if we look at, if we do the math and we, we calculate out each structured parking space and what the city has been seeing for the cost of those, it was coming in, in the high sixes and high sevens. So I think that the, we felt that, we felt that the value of the parcel in order to be able to create the connection along with those 30 parking spaces, which we would be able to offer as overflow parking for all of those nonprofit organizations, was, was, was worth the 1.4 million.
Is it, can it be like, at the waypoint where the public parking is on the ground floor?
Yes.
Do you have any designs of what preliminary designs of what this might look like?
We don't, no, actually, we don't have preliminary designs. So as I mentioned, we've asked TMP to be able to take a look at the site. And, you know, and I think that this is the, this is the, if we're able to acquire the site, as I mentioned, the connectivity piece is one. And we, and we're focused on also, you know, being able to have a stronger and more dominant kind of opening and welcoming to the Matthews Park from Butler Street. And so, you know, I think that we'll be able to create a couple of different options that show, and I think to Tammy's point, right? If we're talking about open space and thinking about the tree canopy, then, you know, are we talking about two parking spaces on that site? Or if we get rid of the two parking spaces, can we increase the open space that much more and be able to depend on the 30 parking spaces that are in the parking garage? So I think that there'll be a few different options. But as of today, Anna, we have not done a specific design for this site.
Okay.
Right. Can I just have one question for Jessica?
Go ahead, Jay.
Okay. So, Butler Street, is this the, will cars be entering and exiting onto Butler Street?
I believe so, JJ, but I'm not, I believe so. And that's what we would like to be able to see, to be able to have some of that traffic deviated off of West Avenue. But again, the design will have to be able to support that concept. We believe that that concept can be supported on this site. But again, it'd be nice to be able to design a couple of different options in order to be able to ensure the highest pedestrian safety and the highest safety at that particular point.
Because, thank you for saying pedestrian safety, because that's what I had in mind in terms of pedestrians entering Matthews Park as well as the Norwalk River Walk.
Exactly, yep.
Yeah, what safeguards do you have in mind for pedestrians?
Well, I think, I think that working with transportation, mobility and parking, their main mission and goal is to in, is to ensure cyclist safety and pedestrian safety and also traffic safety. And so, you know, they were excited to be able to know that the city was trying to purchase this site because it allows them to be able to consider access to the site in, in different ways. And so, I'm not, I'm not a traffic engineer, and so I would need to depend on the staff in order to be able to advise us on what that safety plan looks like. But I know that they are really eager to get started in doing a design. And I know that from a safety standpoint, that'll be their main concern.
Thank you. Sorry, Jessica, if I could. Wouldn't it be, are we putting the cart before the horse? We don't even know what the design is. So we're approving this based on, it could be, I'm sure it's not going to be totally a parking lot, but it could be a parking lot, or it could be green space, or maybe something in between. And honestly, I would only be in favor of it if I thought it was not going to be a parking lot. I'm not in favor of the city buying this little parcel with the 30 parking spaces and then turn that into more parking. I don't think it's a good use of...
The city could also buy it and turn it into the affordable housing that we just approved. Like, not necessarily for Pacific House, but city, we've talked about the city identifying land to purchase and build deeply affordable housing.
Well, we are, we're getting a little far afield here. Our, our requirement is that we judge this on the basis of whether it's consistent with the POCD. Now, some of what Tammy has said, I think does, does go to the question of the POCD. Although, you know, I personally may not agree with that. But I think that's legitimate. I would like to ask, though, if there is a motion to move this forward, to approve it as being consistent with the POCD.
Lou, may I just make one point before you do that? I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, one of the things that I did want to say is that, just as a reminder, the reason why we're moving these things forward is because they are using ARPA-related funds, right? And ARPA-related funds need to be fully encumbered by December the 31st, 2024, and they need to be expended by December the 31st, 2026. And so, you know, in order to be able to do some of the projects that we've been wanting to do with ARPA money, the timeliness is really important. And so, you know, in some cases, maybe we would develop a plan and be able to know exactly what that plan is before we come to you. But in this particular case, because of the ARPA funding, the timeliness is very important. And sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to make that note.
That's okay. I see that Mr. Pachas has joined us. Mr. Pachas will also be seated for the entire meeting. Again, is there a motion to approve this? All right.
Lou, I move to approve it.
Okay. Mr. Cantor has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Jordan Byron has seconded. Any further questions? All right. If not, let's do a roll call on this one.
Ms. Langowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langalas?
Would you please come back to me, Steve?
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Tabacnik?
Upstain.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Pachas?
I will abstain. I wasn't, I couldn't hear the whole discussion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I'm coming back to you, Ms. Langalas.
Thank you. I will say yes, but with reservation. I don't think we have enough information, but I will vote in favor of it.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Okay, and then motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. And we understand you're moving on. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate the support now for these items and for the last five years. So thank you very much.
Good luck in your new position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is 2023-41SP Wegmans Food Market, Inc., 47 Richards Avenue and 677, 667, 651 Connecticut Avenue. Extension of time request for signage for Wegmans. I believe that that's Attorney Klein?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I've got a, my, one of my associates, Stan Chapel, will be handling this, but I'm here to answer questions, too, if they come up.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Chapel. I'm an attorney here at Carmody Torrance Sandak in Tennessee with offices located at 1055 Washington Boulevard in Sanford. I'm here tonight on behalf of Wegmans Food Markets, Inc. And with me this evening is Jay Klein, who you just heard from. He's a partner here at Carmody. And we're here tonight to request a one-year extension for the special permit approval for the signage at 38 and 47 Richards Avenue and 651, 667 and 677 Connecticut Avenue, in connection with application number 2023-41R/SP. And that application was approved on September 20th, 2023, and it was approved with the accompanying text amendment. And this approval was issued in connection with the 2022 site plan and special permit approvals to construct the grocery store, two retail buildings and parking garage, along with site landscaping, off-street parking and other site improvements. The 2023 signage approval is for the installation of wall signage for the grocery store, retail stores and the parking garage, ground signage and directional signage. And the effective date of the approval was October 7th, 2023. And the, a copy of the resolution of approval was recorded on the land records on November 30th, 2023. The applicant has not yet pulled a building permit for the signage, although it plans to pull one in the coming weeks. And under the old regulations, any special permit for which a building permit has not been issued within one year from the effective date shall become null and void unless an extension of time is applied for and granted by the commission. And so, the special permit is set to expire on October 7th, 2024. And accordingly, the applicant requests a one-year extension of the approval. I'm happy to answer any question.
Are there any questions for Attorney Chapel? This, this is fairly straightforward. We, we face this issue and similar issues with some frequency. Is there a motion to approve the request?
I can move to make it.
Okay, Mr. Pachas has moved, and Ms. Langalas has seconded. Any questions or comments?
I would just say, we spent a lot of time talking about the signage for Wegmans when we were reviewing their application. So I felt like it took us a long time to come up with what we thought was good. So I hope that, I don't want to change it dramatically. I don't know. Just...
And sorry to interject, but to that, there, there are no changes to what you approved. We're just, you know, we're making our way through the building permit process and need more time to complete the process. That's it.
Oh, okay. So not necessarily the design?
No, yeah, no, no changes to what was approved.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then let's do this one with a show of hands. All those in favor of the extension request? Looks like it's unanimous.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Next item on our agenda, 2024-37. This is CAM and a Site Plan Review. Wall Street Opportunity Fund LLC, care of Jason Milligan, 21 and 23 Isaac Street, District One, Block 29, lots 25 and 28. Construction of six-story, 210-room, extended stay hotel building. And we also have a review. I think we'll wait, Attorney Blank, until you've completed your presentation. Then we'll ask Mr. Gridwatz to give his report, and you can, you can then respond to that.
Okay, great.
Sure.
Are you ready for me, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So Adam, Adam Blank for the applicant, Wall Street Opportunity Fund, which is the owner of 21 and 23 Isaac Street. With me tonight are Vince Hines and Craig Flaherty. They're the professional engineers. They'll give a fairly brief presentation. Ray Sullivan, the project architect, is also here, who you'll hear from. I think Earl Govern, the landscape architect, is on. And Steve Sapola and Greg Del Rio were the traffic engineers. And I think, I believe, one or both of them are here with us tonight to give a brief presentation on the traffic. Also, we've got Jason Milligan, and Jason enters on behalf of the property owner, and they can answer questions that may come up. So, we're excited about this application. It's a, obviously, as you know, it's a plan for an extended stay hotel. And we hope that you'll approve the coastal site plan and, and site plan application this evening. If I can share my screen. So, I pulled up an aerial. It's highlighted 23, 21 is, is in here. So it's 21 and 23 Isaac Street. As you know, Isaac Street comes in here, and it dead ends here. The property's address is Isaac Street address, but it also fronts along Leonard. And it's a CAM because he got the water way down here. And I think you'll hear that there's not going to be coastal impacts from this development. But any, in any event, this is where we're talking about. It's about 1.25 acres. Currently, it's just a surface parking lot with about a 4,000-square-foot retail plaza. And it sits right next to that. This is the sort of Phase One of the Wall Street Place Poco project, and then Phase Two would be over here. And as you know, Phase, Phase One, this is a six-story structure that's under construction, that does not step back at any level of the building. And so, it's six stories right along Isaac Street. So the, this, we're proposing 210 rooms, six-story extended stay hotel. It does, ours does step back at the streets, on the upper floors. There's also four live-work units proposed along Leonard Street. And here, we'll show you some, some views of that in, in a few moments. And within the, the proposed building, there'll be, let me show you this, there'll be 167 garage parking spaces, and between three and four new spaces at grade. You've got some comments from TMP and some others. So I'm saying three to four simply because it's, I think it's on your conditions of approval, but, but it's sort of in flux as to whether it's three or four at grade. And I'll also point out to you that, that, you know, look, this is a new application. It's a new, new zoning. It's a, I think this is your first, I'll say, significant project that's fallen under the new regs. As you know, there's no parking requirements in this CD4 zone. And that, one thing that's really nice about sort of having that flexibility is, so we're proposing 167 garage parking spaces. And that may work. If, if we want, we can switch, I mean, it requires approval, but we can switch over and make that valet and double the parking capacity. You know, the Sono Hotel, which you recently approved, which was also valet, and that's a fairly common thing. If they need to do valet, they can do valet and have a whole lot more parking. But the plan currently is a self-park system of 167 garage spaces. We have sign-offs from police, DPW, WPCA and health. We did receive comments from TMP. We've provided some responses to those comments. Most of their comments really weren't zoning-related. And, and I believe some of the comments that your staff found significant, they've included as, in your draft resolution to approve as conditions. We, we also received some formal comments and a report, as you know, from the peer-reviewed architect, Carlo Andal, Bob G., who's gonna, I guess, talk shortly. And we've had quite a bit of back and forth with both Bob and your... Um, and we've had quite a bit of back and forth with both Bob and your um uh staff uh on the architectural uh review. And we've provided um written comments, which hopefully you've seen to in response to um Bob's report. Um, the redevelopment agency met last night and considered this application for compliance with the uh Wall Street West Avenue Plan. And they found that it meets the goals of the Wall Street West Avenue Plan. They liked the building's design. Uh, the only thing that they asked for in their meeting was um on the uh parking garage, uh the. And I'll talk a little bit more about the plans in a second, but in the parking garage, um, the the section here that that. Faces the a public realm area, they wanted to see some uh additional architectural element. On the garage openings from what was proposed. And then um you'll, I think here, I'm sure you're gonna hear that um with respect to um. The peer review um from um Bob, uh, there's really only s- six items. That I'll call open items, six items that he had concerns with, that we didn't agree. Um, we would uh. Sort of go along with his his um desires. All the rest, we either said we comply or that we would comply and there was no objection. So there's really only six. Issues and um redevelopment in their meeting essentially said that they're gonna defer to you folks. Um, on on those six conditions. Um, otherwise, they approved the um proposal. Um, the these regs, um, I'll stop sharing for a second, but you know, the the regs. These regs are really, really, really detailed. Um, they are very different than the old regs. And they um regulate um. A lot of what I would call minutia, and I'm not, I'm not sort of judging that with that statement. I'm just saying that it's very detailed. Uh, we spent an enormous amount of time to try to get compliance um. Because we are working through the regs, as was your staff, as was Bob, the doing the peer review. Um, it was not an easy undertaking. We went through a number of revisions of the the plans. And in working with with Bob uh and your staff, uh we really think that we addressed. You know, probably hundreds of concerns over the course of the last four months. I mean, we started the discussions on this. Four or five months ago with your staff and we've submitted, I think, three or three and a half months ago, we submitted the application. And it's been sort of non-stop. I will tell you that the effort that all of us have put in, I am certain, has been three to four times what we would. Do on an application of this size under the old regs. And I'm sure that's gonna change as we all get more familiar with the regs. But a lot has gone into getting to where we are today. And I think I will commend Jason. I mean, he's the client. He pays my bills, so I have to, but um but honestly, he 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 really worked hard. To accommodate um feedback and work that in, whether he agreed with it or not. Um, to get to a project that I think we can all um live with, and that really is gonna be great for this uh neighborhood. Um, so, um. Let me just uh jump off, and we'll talk about some of these, the few little points of disagreement in a in a minute. Um, the, I'll give you a few more, a few highlights on the project, and then we'll let Vince talk about the site plan and some of the drainage, and then you'll hear from Ray. Um, but so the extended stay hotel that's proposed, um, will have, I'll say, some, but a modest amount of amenities. Some rooftop amenities, a business center, some lounge areas. Um, and you know, uh, it's been sort of designed to be. Uh, sparse is probably not the right word, but not a full-service hotel, um, because. The the goal is to get the folks staying at the hotel out into the neighborhood, supporting um uh the businesses in the area, many of which. Uh, Mr. Milligan has interest in, so would like to see everybody out in the community, but also to make it really a walkable uh neighborhood. Um, and to get some life out there. And I I think this plan um does that. The um. Let me share this. The existing site is basically entirely impervious surface. It's all like asphalt. Um. Will change that, so about twenty percent will become pervious. Um, there'll be thirty-six drainage galleries to capture. Uh, runoff, treat water quality, including a hundred percent of the building's roof area. Um, eighteen percent of the site will be landscaped or finished with permeable pavers. Um, the construction methodology will be certified uh as lead silvers. Um, the um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just pause a second. Is it possible to um to import um? Jason Enters and Jason Milligan. Um, so they can respond to questions as they come up as panelists for the presentation. Sorry. Um. The um. So so the water quality is gonna be substantial. You'll hear the water quality is gonna be substantially improved as a result of this development. Um, there's a fairly comprehensive landscape plan. Um. A little bit. You'll see here, the the focal point of which is is a a this, well, I'm gonna call it a public realm. I'm not sure that's the specific word for it. But a public realm area here between Isaac Street and uh Leonard Street uh on the side of the the project. Um, this is, as a reminder, this is um a site plan um review. It's not a special permit use. Um, and uh it, we believe it is fully compliant with your regulations under that site plan review, and obviously it's in the CAM zone. Um, no coastal resources were identified within the boundaries of the property. Um, and we're quite far from the coastal resources. Um, the. The application, one of the, before I turn it over to Vince and Craig, um. Uh, in your staff memo, um, one of the things that came up was, you know, what happens? Um, and actually, I'll just show you this and then I'll answer, and I'll type it. So so this is looking at the development. From Isaac Street, sort of, this is the 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 waypoint uh building. Our proposed structure along Isaac Street. Um, on Leonard, these would be the workforce, uh, or I'm sorry, the live live work units would be located here. On Leonard Street, and now you're looking back up towards Isaac. Uh, and there's sort of a broader overhead shot. Um, as you know, Isaac right now is a a s- a a straight dead end. And this would be a new sort of half rotary um turnaround here that we would be providing. Um, the. One of the things raised in the staff memo was, you know, what happens if there's a a change in use? Um, and how do we go about handling a change in use and and um, you know, as this pro. As the application has progressed, um, and Mr. Milligan has begun working with a a hotel consultant and. Um, lining up uh an operator for the extended stay hotel. Um, we think that it's. Likely that that the ultimate hotel operator is gonna wanna use about a hundred rooms. As extended stay hotel. If that occurs, if it's less than the two hundred and ten that we're proposing today. Then we expect that we will come back to you asking for a change in use. Or the other portion of the building to be uh apartments. Um, we're not asking for that now. Um, we we've recognized fully that if there is any change in use, we'll have to come back and and ask for a change of use. Um, but the building has been designed so that if there's, that these uses are 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 sort of can be in flux. In other words. If we if we change the use, there's no redesign of the building. There's no redesign of the units. It's it's simply a different, a different class of use classification. That we'll come back and get permission for from you, and that is. Uh, in fact, listed as one of the conditions of approval was that we do come back. Um, if there's changes to the plans or to the use. Um, and and part of it is, you know, it looks like the hotel, the likely hotel operator. May prefer something less than two hundred and ten units, but also since this application began, Mr. Milligan. Uh, has developed plans for the possibility of an of an additional hotel. Um, in the neighborhood here, um, that we expect you'll see in the near future. Um, and therefore, having a hundred here and maybe a hundred there may make more sense than two hundred at this one location. But in any event, the that's a long answer to, we have to come back to you if we change the use, and we will. Um, and um, I think the other thing that I I'll just point out, and I don't know, and Brian or Steve can correct me. In the, I know you all are considering some reg changes, but one thing to point out that we're not. That we're saying we'll comply with, then we will, if it's a, if it's imposed on us, and it's, I think in the staff memo was was on these EV chargers. Um, but your regs right now require, I think, twenty percent of the parking to be. To have EV chargers and fifty percent of the parking to be EV ready at at level two. Um, and this is probably not the best time for it, but I just wanna put on your radar. But if you look at, you know, how many miles the average person drives, how long the charge lasts. And how long it takes to charge a vehicle. Um, you know, the average apartment. Owner is gonna need to charge their car about once a week. Um, that's gonna be about where you are for about twelve hours. Um, if every, and there are apps now which which, you know, parking structure owners use to. Uh, control who has access to the electric chargers and to schedule it so that you can sequence people in and out, and it can be scheduled. So, you know, on a, on a, if you had a hundred units and a hundred spaces and a hundred cars. If every single one of them were electric and you optimized how people were utilizing the charging spaces, you'd need about five percent of the spaces to be. E- EV capable, you know, like actually having the chargers in place. Um, you're requiring twenty to have it and fifty percent to be ready for it. We're nowhere near needing that capacity now, and it's incredibly expensive to get a building set up for that. And by the time you get there, the battery technology and the charging technology will be totally different, and I think it's gonna be obsolete. In fact. And it, and I'm I'm talking about apartment buildings as opposed to retail, because they're sort of different users.
Yes, could I just, in one of our meetings, there was a very persuasive monetary case made about this, is to just exactly how much. Power was required for that fifty percent and what that would cost the project, and I think it it would help you to put that in there.
Jason can jump in, yeah.
So so we had our electrical engineer um do a study for the twenty percent and and fifty percent ready. And we need to to double the size of our transformers from three thousand to six thousand. And it was an extra million dollars. It's it's financially not a feasible plan.
Well, frankly, this is, this is not the time for this presentation.
Um. I'm just answering.
We're not considering tonight this issue. If you wish to bring this up, uh, we're holding a public hearing October second. And uh, that's the place where this uh conversation belongs.
Okay, that fair enough.
Not as part, not as part of the presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so um Vince, do you wanna um run through the site plan or Craig?
Your thing, uh, let me share my screen. Good evening, everybody. Uh, for the record, uh, my name is Vincent Hines, and I'm a licensed engineer with Redness and Mead. Having offices in Stanford and Wilton. Our office has provided the engineering and surveying for the development project here. Uh, A- Adam stole a little bit of my thunder with respect to the stormwater management intent and CAM information, but uh. Here we are. Uh, I have the zoning site plan up here, just as a starter. Uh, we're gonna have typical. Uh, DPW-approved streetscapes with the brick, brick edging and concrete sidewalks. Uh, similar to the, similar, if not the same exact uh to the Wall Street uh. Construction uh across Isaac Street. Uh, we'll have the public realm space, which is gonna constitute, uh, consist of some. Walkways and and landscape improvements. Th- those walkways themselves will be uh permeable pavers. Uh, you know, allowing for that immediate stormwater runoff to infiltrate back into the ground there. Um, from a drainage standpoint, you you know, the site is approximately one point two acres, of which, like Adam said. Uh, a majority, a- almost all of it, I think there's two hundred square feet uh of lawn, but uh the the majority is impervious. Parking lot conditions with no formal water quality treatment beyond catch basin sumps. Um, the the runoff from the site. I- i- is ultimately all tributary to Leonard Street where it it then goes out. Uh, you know, towards the river. Under proposed conditions, uh, we're actually reducing the impervious coverage by some of those methods of. Adding landscaping, uh, permeable pavers and and such, uh, and. With that in mind, water quality improvements for the site include that net reduction. Uh, they include reduction of uncovered parking spaces, so these will be covered, and if there's any drains in the covered parking spaces. Those will be tributary to a oil grit separator that then goes out to the sanitary sewer systems as required. Uh, and then we'll have two underground infiltration systems here within the garage level. Uh, treating tributary roof areas and then, like I said, the permeable pavers. Uh, in all, the peak rates of volume and runoff are reduced to the one-hundred-year storm event as required by DPW's. Drainage manual. Uh, and with that, DPW did provide a a review response to the project uh with some conditions uh that can be addressed. With them prior to a building permit request. Uh, they made no commentary. Uh, on the conditions with respect to the stormwater mitigation system. Uh, i- in addition to stormwater, the site will have access to the typical suite of utilities. Uh, with transformers located down in the the southwest corner of the site. Um, cable, telephone, uh, water and gas as necessary. Uh, and then a sewer connection that will be made in Leonard Street. Uh, w- with respect to the sewers, WPCA has reviewed the project. Uh, and authored an approval with standard conditions. Uh, that primarily, they include as uh typical conditions on any job that they see. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any other site plan drainage-specific questions, uh, if you have them, otherwise I'll turn it back to Adam.
Um, Ray, you wanna run through the project?
Sure, could, would I be able to browse the screen? Okay, so let me.
Mister Chairman and members of the committee, good evening. My name is Ray Sullivan of the Sullivan Architectural Group. We're we're located on Broad Street, uh, on the Green up here in Milford. Um, what I have in front of you here is the uh, is the landscape plan. I'm not gonna be addressing the landscape plan, but it's a good colored image of the site. And I wanted to just give a brief history of why the building is the shape it is and 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 how it cut into this form. So when Jason first called and said, uh, that, you know, that he wanted to develop this piece of property, I walked to Isaac Street and, you know, and I think that. You know, we can all agree that it's kind of a tired street, you know, it's a dead-end street. There wasn't a lot of good activity on it. You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, Poco got stalled. Um, and so my concern was, and 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 my goal was to be able to, you know, pull onto Isaac Street. Come back to this location and create a sense of arrival, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, as opposed to a dead-end street. I I wanted to come down Isaac Street and say, oh, wow, you know, wow, this is nice, you know, I'm glad I turned down this street. This makes a lot of sense. Uh, and really what we envisioned was a a turnaround here, uh, you know, a full roundabout. And uh, but that gets complicated when we're talking about multiple property owners and the city and whatnot. But we were able to achieve a a, you know, a a partial roundabout for ourselves, so we can come down Isaac Street. You know, you know, we can, someone can pull in and actually, you know, go back down Isaac Street. And and there are some parking spaces, you know, you know, along the front here. So um, that's the, this this kind of roundabout thought. Was um, you know, o- o- one of the main concepts and 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 how this building took this partially curved shape.
You know, another main component in the design was that the property line on on the Westerly side, you know, is right along the walkway of of sixteen and eighteen Isaac Street. And, you know, so we've got the right to go up to the property line. If you're building a building with units, I would always stay at least ten feet off in order to get enough windows and light and ventilation. But in talking to Jason, you know, he thought, you know, the best thing to do was really to create a a a public realm area here to pull our building off the property line so that there was there was light, there was ventilation, there was a public park-like setting. And in the future, it could morph into something else, but but what it does do, it, you know, it does maintain, you know, access, you know, into this building, which only has this limited frontage, you know, right here. So that was the basic concept as to how the building took shape. So if we look at the 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 main entrance, you know, the main entrance is also the front of the building. It's the focal point of the building. So so you're coming down Isaac Street. Here's our partial, you know, turnaround and drop off area. The what what happens with this kind of main focal point of the building, that is centered directly on a walkway that goes out in between seventy seven Walt and the theater. So there's activity planned for out there. There are improvements in the roadway. We have concepts for for how this that area is going to get improved as well because Jason owns much of the property, you know, along that way. And we thought it was important that that it and it's set up that way so that every time the elevators open up, you look out a an attractive lobby and you look right down out to Wall Street. So I I think we're trying to make a even though it's a back road, you know, we're trying to make a strong connection, you know, you know, out to Wall Street. The that Westerly side, you know, and and here's the existing neighbor. And and so we've got this public realm area here and the, you know, you know, again, you know, we've got the ability to go up to the property line, which is right here. You know, we chose not to do that. We didn't think it was the right thing to do. You know, when we discussed other alternatives for the site, you know, I said, well, we at least want to be ten feet off, but 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 again, you know, under Jason's guidance, we widen this thing at the narrowest point. It's like twenty six feet. And it really creates a a park-like setting, you know, with paper walkways, you know, benches, lighting, landscaping. And Ray, let me just jump in for one second on the on the building next to us. The the half of it or I don't know it's a half, but the portion of it towards Leonard Street factory underground is located in that section of that building. And we did get this late this afternoon, which may or may not have made it into your records yet, but a letter of support from the factory underground for this project. Just wanted to make sure you're aware. As you as you proceed down the public realm area, there is a a secondary lobby, you know, down at the back of the building, which you can get to from Isaac Street or or in and ends up being a little bit closer to Leonard Street in the rear. The Leonard Street elevation is a little bit more, you know, straightforward, doesn't have any curved shapes, you know, you know, isn't set back, you know, a certain dimension. But does create a good amount of activity, you know, along the road. We've got the live work units here, you know, which is, you know, kind of something in the overall master plan we want to achieve. There is access to the garage off Leonard Street. So you can pull in off of Isaac, find a parking space, and then you could exit here or 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 do it in the opposite manner. You know, one other thing about, you know, this shape is this corner element right here where we tried to create some 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 volume, some shadow lines, you know, some attractive architecture. You know, we purposely spent some time on this corner because when you drive down West Avenue, it's not like you can see this, you know, as you're driving down at all times, but you'll see vistas of this in between buildings. And I think it would be a great idea to create something of interest that people can see and understand that there's there's more behind Wall Street and that Isaac Street and Leonard Street is 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 really a viable location. So quickly. I'll quickly run through the plan. I won't spend a lot of time on it and, you know, unless you want me to go back, but but, you know, this there's a there's a small basement area that is is underneath the lobby. You know, the ground floor has that partial turnaround, you know, this is the lobby. There's an access point, you know, into the garage here off of Isaacs and and then you can, you know, exit or 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 enter up to, you know, to Leonard here. Or you could take the ramp up and you will end up in a the second level of parking. Right, for pedestrians, they can exit directly out onto can you show the the question how they can exit out of the garage and into the garage? Right, so behind the lobby, you know, there is this this sidewalk here. So, you know, you could park here and and enter the lobby, the backside of the lobby that way. You could park here, walk to the sidewalk and go out to the street to Isaac Street. And you can park your car and you can walk to the 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 rear lobby and and there you could exit the public realm and and over to Leonard or 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 back up to Isaac Street. So we've created, you know, pathways for the pedestrian to get out to the streets. The 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 second level is very similar to the, you know, to the first. This is the this is the top of the of the of the ramp. And and then the parking configuration is much the same. I didn't point out the live work, but these are the upper level of the live work, you know, that is looking out onto Leonard Street. And this is kind of a mezzanine area, you know, up over the main lobby. The typical floor, you know, has forty two units on it. And what happens is that is that units, you know, two oh one back to about, you know, two twenty four or smaller units, and they range anywhere from approximately four hundred and twenty five to four hundred and seventy five feet. You know, and then, you know, twenty five and twenty six from there back to the end, you know, at forty one and forty two, you know, those range from approximately six hundred and eighty to nine hundred and sixty. And there might be one odd, there are a few odd shaped ones. But as Jason pointed out before, you know, we've kind of created a a variety of sizes. And so as pointed out in the main focal point, and this this line looks directly down that that walkway out to Wall Street, those elevator doors open up and you're at an elevator lobby with big glass walls and you're looking out over Wall Street. The the fifth and the sixth floors are stepped back. They're stepped back ten feet, you know, you know, along the frontages. Here, some of the units, you know, get a little bit smaller, you know, but, you know, but the, you know, the composition is the same. You know, where, you know, up until, you know, unit six twenty four, you know, they are the the smaller size and then the larger size, you know, extends beyond. Again, that is the main lobby with its view. You know, this is the secondary lobby. There's a roof plan. So people using the facility can come up and get to a rooftop amenity area. You know, and, you know, there's also a large, you know, solar panel array system and and, you know, and some, you know, you know, some exiting, you know, and access, you know, to the to the solar panels and access to various components on the roof. So that that's the basic run through the building. That is the basic concept of of how the building evolved, its shape and and how the elevations evolved. You know, overall. I gotta find, where do I stop sharing now? Oh, here. The the we have made an attempt as we designed the building, you know, we we designed the building to be, I would call it, you know, a slightly contemporary building. You know, it is, it is not wildly contemporary. We've all seen contemporary buildings, you know, with large expanses, wild and odd shapes. This is not the case, you know, in effect. The stacking of the floors, the arrangement of the window configuration, you know, you know, much of the arrangement of the building, you know, you know, is in a traditional fashion, but, you know, we chose to express those elements in a in a slightly more contemporary fashion. So, you know, I I know we'll discuss that, you know, you know, a little bit further, but that 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 was just our thought, you know, I I didn't think that, you know, we needed to mimic another building, you know, there's a variety of building looks down there and 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 it was our, you know, our recommendation to Jason and Jason, you know, to provide a a a look that was, you know, I would I would call somewhat contemporary, but clearly not stark contemporary. So, you know, unless there's any questions, I'll 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 stop there.
All right, any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
Well, yes, I do have some questions.
Please, JJ, go ahead.
Also for Jason Milligan. So I'm I'm just wondering about the surrounding area. It, you know, it's 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 a dotted with, you know, affordable places to live. And then you have all these new shiny high rises going up that is increasing the value of the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering, the existing people who live there being displaced? And I'm just wondering how much of a footprint are you taking up that is going to displace these people?
So the 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 simple answer to that is that this building is going on top of a parking lot. So, you know, we're not displacing, you know, you know, any structures, you know, any people whatsoever. I I'll let Jason Milligan address it as well, but I think you'll find that Jason has embraced the area tremendously. He's got a number of smaller buildings where he's got small units for 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 lesser rents. You know, he 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 has identified and is aware that the the college is an attractive portion of that area and and that it's growing. And he's had multiple, multiple meetings, you know, you know, with the college and 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 discussions of of housing for them. So so the the short answer is we are not displacing anybody. We're putting the building on what was a parking lot.
Just a parking lot, you're not dismantling any buildings or?
There's a little a four thousand square foot retail building. There's there's a small building on the on the. Retail, no, no apartments, no housing. Yeah. Jason, do you want to add anything? Jason, you're muted if you want to add anything.
Well, I think Jason had mentioned that he wanted to to stay silent tonight. So in that respect, I think that that both Adam and and Ray have 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 covered that question. I I think that the the global plan is not to displace anyone, but is to reinvigorate the area, gentrify the area a little bit and and not there's no proposal for high end housing and expensive rents. As a matter of fact, that's that's something that Jason and I have talked extensively about is that anything that we do in the area, we want to be twenty five to thirty percent less than these high amenity highly amenitized apartment buildings that are going up all around. So we're 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 for making an urban area where lots of people can live and and afford.
And if I could just jump in, you know, adding something that Jason was saying just now as well as Adam. If you look at an aerial of the what were the Avalon buildings, you know, behind the old Norwalk Mall, you'll see these giant courtyards and all this activity. And and what, you know, what happens is, you know, you know, somebody might get off, might get off the train or the highway, they go into their apartment, and then they've got this enclave in there and they they kind of never leave. And the one point that Adam was making was that there are going to be amenities here, but we think the amenity is Wall Street. You know, there are restaurants, there are shops, there are plenty places to go to. And so we're we are not trying to create this high rise that is exclusive. We're trying to create a spot that is inclusive and it gets those people out into the community and makes the community, you know, more active and more successful. Which which Jason's done a whole lot, which you don't see as a commission, but he's got pulled a whole lot of permits to bring a lot of smaller inexpensive units online in the area that that weren't there previously. So he's not not this building, but but in that neighborhood and right along Isaac Street, along Wall Street, he's 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 done a lot. And they're they're generally lower priced units.
Tammy, you had question?
Yes, hi, thanks. Good evening, everybody for your, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering, now that Isaac Street is truly dead end and you can't cut through the parking lot to get out of out onto Leonard Street, what if there's a fire down there? Is the fire apparatus able to get in and, you know, do what they need to do?
Yeah, they they we've been working with fire to make sure that they're fully satisfied as well as T and P. We've provided them with various turning movements that they've asked for to make sure that it remains safe. And it 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 is, I mean, there is, as a practical matter, there's a parking lot that people can cut through currently. As a legal matter, there Isaac Street has always been exactly as is proposed. And it's, you know, if Jason could close off the Isaac Street entrance to that parking lot today and have entrance and exit solely on Leonard. So that's why that roundabout, the half roundabout we're proposing really goes a long way to allowing fire access. There's turnaround areas in our site as well as at the end of the road. And we are, we're also hoping that and we're optimistic, but that the owner at at Wall Street Place will agree to allow the other half of that rotary to go in, which requires, you know, a a nub of their property to to make a full rotary there instead of a half rotary. It's something that I think the city is very much in favor of. We're in favor of that's why we designed a whole building and half a rotary. But we don't control that, so that's not sort of we can't, we can't make our application based on that occurring, but it's it's definitely something we're hoping is going to occur. We're optimistic about it. And I I think I think, you know, your staff has had conversations with that owner as well and and it's a decent shot of that occurring.
Okay, thanks. I have two two follow up questions.
Go ahead, Tammy, and then Alan.
Okay, thanks. Kind of because old habits die hard for motorists who might have gone on Isaac Street and exited on Leonard. Do you foresee cars just cutting through your parking garage?
That's definitely not what we want. But I don't I don't know as a practical matter and in working with T and P, I mean, T and P would, I think, prefer that we not have gates in and out of the garage. We may or may not want them. I think as a condition of your approval, if we do put in gates, it's it's got to be approved by T and P in the city, which would kind of cut down on people trying to cut through the garage. It just could be a safety hazard. But if we don't have gates, it may be hard to to prevent that.
Right, so I maybe I'm getting too into the weeds. Sorry, Lou, but because the the front entrance of the hotel is on Isaac Street, will there be signage out on Wall Street directing people that way? Or what about the back, you know, sort of the back door on Leonard Street? Is that going to be advertised as, you know, here's the hotel?
There will definitely be signage. And there I think you've got conditions that relate to signage for pedestrians, signage for motorists. And we have not submitted a signage package, but it's super important to to Jason that that people be able to find the hotel and get in and out. I mean, he wants it as much as you do, so you know, there there will absolutely be signage to get in and out and so that people, both pedestrians and motorists, know where they're going and where they can park.
Okay, and one just one more question. Thank you. If if this is not successful as a hotel and you mentioned that, you know, you might turn some of the units into apartments and with this new performing arts school, is there a possibility this is going to turn into a dormitory?
I can answer that. No. We have another site that we're talking to the school about for building dormitories. This will never be dormitories. This will never be dormitories.
Okay, thank you.
We're definitely going to have their parents come stay at the hotel, though.
Okay, that's great.
Go ahead, Galen.
My question was partially asked by Tammy, but when you said you would, might convert some of the units into apartments, how big are these units going to be?
Uh, well, the, the, as, I, I just want to say one thing too, and I, I, I'll mostly stay quiet, but we're in discussion with three major brands right now and that will dictate some of that and there'll be a variety of sizes, but it's, it's tough to speculate completely. We're proposing what we're proposing right now. And if we change, you'll, you'll, I'm sure have questions at that point. It's, it's, it's hard to say, and I don't want these guys to speculate either because it's not up to anyone on this call. Depending upon the brand we go with, that's going to be the first, um, domino to fall. And they're also going to dictate the signage. So there's a couple of things we've deliberately left off because we have not, um, completed an agreement with a brand. And the brand, the brands are the major brands you would think of.
You haven't yet set the size of the, of the individual units.
Well, they're set now, but you know, there'll, there'll be a variety potentially, you know, there, we don't want to, um, commit to what might happen if, depending on which brand. Are you asking right now with the sizes?
Yeah.
We, we've set generalized sizes, but each brand has a different preference for their extended stay sizes.
But right now, right now, in the application in front of the commission, the, the unit sizes range from what to what, Ray?
Three eighty.
Yeah, so ba- ba- based on kind of the question I think being asked is, is that in, in the backside of the, you know, the front side of the building to a certain point are smaller units, more of the standard hotel. And then we're providing some larger units, uh, for the extended stay portion. Um, and those larger units, I would tell you are very healthy units. They range from, you know, six hundred and eighty to nine hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, and some are even a couple, uh, you know, some, some, a little bit of square footage over that. So they are healthy sizes, uh, if they wanted to be a larger extended stay or, or if some conversion happened at a later date.
I see, thank you.
Uh, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Diana's got one.
Diana, go ahead. You're muted.
Sorry. Um, how does this building compare in height with the Tyvek building?
It's almost exactly the same height.
So, okay.
That, that, the Tyvek building will probably appear a little bit bigger because it doesn't step back on the other floors. And the first floor elevation is slightly different. Our first floor elevation might be three or four feet lower than theirs. Uh, but within, you know, if, if the buildings are approximately seventy feet tall, within two or three feet, they're exactly the same.
Okay, so no windows will be overlooking the roof, in other words, your roof.
No, no, they won't.
And, um, what mechanicals are going to be on the roof other than the solar panels?
Well, I think that there will be a, you know, uh, corridor units, uh, you know, and, and, and lobby HVAC units that will need condensers for. So though, you know, but, but, but the majority of the units were intended are, are, are PTAC, which is a through-the-wall unit. Uh, and so that the, uh, disturbance up on the roof is at a minimal.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. And, and one last thing, the deliveries and the trash collection will come in through the Leonard Street entrance?
So we have a, uh, we have an assigned, uh, uh, loading area, uh, you know, loading space in the back off, off of Leonard. Uh, what we have within the building is we have a trash room, uh, with chutes. And tho- those chutes go down to that basement area I ran through quickly, uh, to compactors. And we've got a way to bring those. What, what, what happens is it, when the waste goes into the compactors, they get bundled up, you know, they get shrunken down, bundled up into plastic. And then there are small dumpsters where you could just kind of wheel that out. So that's going to happen to a private contractor, so they'll make arrangements, whether it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday. At ten, that stuff gets wheeled out, uh, but other than that, you know, you, you would never even see it.
So there'll be no trash outside the building?
No, there would, no, no, no dumpsters, nothing.
Thank you.
I think this may be the most important question of the night, but where's Rebel gonna go?
That's a great question. And, and you have to read page six in the coming weeks.
Okay. The staying in Wall Street, I hope?
Me too, yes.
Okay.
We're, we're talking about a variety of sites and timing's going to be part of it, but there are a big important business down there and, and, and we love Rebel Daughter Cookie.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Sullivan? But if, if not, uh, I'm going to, uh, ask Mr. Griswatt, um, to give his presentation. Uh, let's keep it short, uh, perhaps concentrate on, um, uh, the six issues where, uh, we don't fully agree.
All right, thank you, Miss, uh, Mr. Chairman. You'll excuse me, I'm, uh, recovering from God knows what right now. Uh, let's see, I want to share a screen here. See if this is going to work. Uh, well, I hope this is going to work. Screen sharing. What, what if anything do you see? You just see that, okay. Um, let, so let's go, one, one thing first, I, uh, the, the attorney blank has, uh, characterized, uh, what I'm, uh, responsible for is the minutia, I think, and, uh, well, I, I will make the most of the minutia I have. Uh, the, uh, one, one thing that, uh, as, as the attorney correctly pointed out, we're going through the zoning ordinance here and, uh, some of the, some of this is effectively a beta test of, uh, of what it says. And one of the interesting things is on the, um, the walkthrough area here, which, what you call it is, is very important because if you take a certain definition from zoning, it becomes a passage. A passage is something that you want, but a passage has requirements as a secondary frontage, which are not advantageous to this project. So when, uh, uh, the architect was calling it and, uh, let's see, as we determine this, uh, it's, it's, as long as it's, uh, public realm space, it doesn't have those secondary frontage requirements. So these are things that will have to be worked out, but there's, it's a good zoning ordinance, but there are a few things that can be improved on it. Now focusing on these six or so points that we have here. Um, it's important to, to know that you've got a, a real, a very, very good zoning ordinance that goes beyond and in many ways correct some of the, the shortcomings of yours and almost every other community zoning ordinance. You have now a, a, a form-based, uh, set of regulations that are not strictly limited or cannot be completely defined by, uh, quantities or specifics, but are an aesthetic uh, that is, is being sought. And in this way, not to get too philosophical, but you might think that you are approving, uh, projects for the symphony of what the city is. Every piece should be working in concert with every other piece to create a pleasing whole. Now, let's see if this goes down. There we go. Okay. So for example, uh, the, uh, an important thing is that the illustrations in the zoning are not incidental. They are integral to understanding what zoning wants. So when they show pictures like this or like this of one segment of a building and another segment of building that look completely distinct and are coherent from, from top to bottom, that's what zoning means, even if you don't have the words that say it in exactly those terms. Okay, so we come to the first issue that, that we have a, uh, an issue with, and that is what does it mean to be an arcade? You have this illustration of what it means to be an arcade with one, the supporting posts of the arcade somewhat back from the curb line, not on, not overlapping the curb, but back enough so that a vehicle maneuvering in here, opening a door in here can't hit the columns. That's important. Second thing that you have is the columns provide, pro, uh, are designed to be an implicit continuation of the overall facade plane. In other words, the facade does not project beyond the columns. It is co-planar with the columns. Uh, and that actually goes back to how all traditional architecture, uh, is designed, that the face of the column is the face of the wall above. So that, that's something where the current project doesn't really do that. It can be easily designed. I should point this out, that these points, while they may be minutia, uh, to, uh, uh, someone who is not in the design profession are what make a, a design either, uh, coherent, uh, comely, um, and something that you want to be with. Uh, so that's, that's, that was number one. That we talk about the cornices, uh, as being something that need to be developed a little bit more, that, uh, the, that they are, they quite frankly just don't have the gusto or the sophistication of what one might expect from a building of a comparable size with terms of the number of the elements, the proportion of the elements. Uh, one can come up with a lot of different examples, but the, uh, uh, we are recommending that they should be more. Uh, the, the, uh, there's a bay on the, uh, Isaac Street side of the building that kind of is sort of a bay, but is also trying to be part of the building. It really needs something that makes it distinct, that is supporting it. Why is it hanging out there? How is, how is it visually, uh, kept from falling down? Uh, we, we mentioned that, uh, the, uh, there is a, a zoning requirement for window area. They, they have a zoning chart that asserts that they have the adequate window area. I do not doubt that they do, but with any sort of, uh, statistical, uh, requirement like this, there is traditionally in a submission, an actual diagram that shows how the window area is calculated, that's easy to add. Uh, we talked about the fact that, uh, the window trim on the building sounds like minutia. I know minutia is not a very exciting thing, but all of the examples in zoning show window trim that actually is three-dimensional. It is a, a solid element that is not a, a, a plane of plastic or a plane of metal just applied to the building. And it makes a difference and it makes a big difference, and that's why it's in your zoning ordinance. It's an easy thing to do. Um, and this does not mean that you wouldn't use exactly the windows that they're proposing. They're probably very good windows, but the window trim doesn't meet your requirements. Uh, we talked about the foundation wall and, uh, the, that, uh, zoning only approves stone or masonry for that foundation wall and first, first floor. Uh, that's this, uh, I think every report that we have done for you uh, set, has said the same thing in the past, and now we have a zoning ordinance that, uh, makes it explicit. I'd like to show you one example here. I see a typo in this other thing. Uh, let's go to, to, uh, that, that was in your initial report, because this is important about what you have a, a right to expect in terms of the materiality. You may remember that a lot of, there we go, that a lot of, um, design guidelines talk about rendering material in texture and depth. How would one do that in realistic, modern economy? This is a hotel, a Hampton Inn in, uh, uh, Portland, Maine. Uh, and it's, it's clad primarily in brick, but also in what looks like stone. In fact, and I think this is a reasonable interpretation of the requirements in what is called cast stone, that is a cement that is with a fine finish that, uh, uh, makes it look like limestone. And you can see with the material like this, you can get all of the profiling and detail that you can get in traditional hundred-year-old elements. So this is just to tell you, not for this project, but that it's reasonable to expect that this is something that you can get. And then, just to finish off, we talked about the, the parking structures with the exception of the typo. Um, and the fact that what we're, what the, the challenge here is that the zoning, I think quite rightly, wants parking structures hidden behind liner buildings. With this particular project, there are some places that that doesn't apply, the biggest place of which is along that, uh, open space that has, uh, a large uh, area of, of openings, quite frankly, just defined right now as you would, would have done in a nineteen seventies parking garage. And it needs something, the, if you were to interpret the zoning literally, you would be carrying the window pattern from above down into the parking garage. And that's certainly one way you could do it. Another way would be a decorative way. One could think of a rhythm of, uh, vertical, um, columns, maybe just tubes, maybe just round tubes across those openings that made what's, was once a parking garage, now a colonnade. And that would be something that would be an asset and not a liability to the, uh, project. So with that, I would take any questions, let me see.
Bob, I have a, uh, question about, um, the foundation wall.
Yes.
You're saying it doesn't comply. What is the material there proposing?
They're proposing a ceramic tile, about an inch-thick ceramic tile. How do I get out of sharing?
You're out of it, you're good.
We're out.
Oh, I'm out? Oh, good. All right, I just have to close this out and now I will see you or I'll push this button. There you are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other que- any, uh, questions for Bob?
That's it?
I mean, I have to say frankly that, um, uh, as Adam, uh, himself pointed out, this is the, really the first substantial, uh, building that's come to us under the new regulations. Uh, I would hate, uh, with this very first building, uh, to, uh, see uh, something that is non-compliant in so many different ways. I think it undermines what we're trying to do with the new zoning regulations.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what you mean. There's, there's a, there's a handful of items, like, should the, should the ground level be stone or porcelain that we had a disagreement with? We understand the reg says porcelain, if you, I mean, says it can't be porcelain and the condition of approval is that it not be porcelain. Um, you know, there's, I, I, and I would like, and I, I see Nick, however you want to handle the meeting is certainly fine. We would like an opportunity to talk about a few of these points of disagreement.
Oh, absolutely.
Whatever's appropriate.
At, at, when, uh, if you want, if there are no other questions right now from the commission members, uh, we'd welcome that.
Adam, I think, I think Ray should go first, yeah?
Oh, and go ahead, Nick.
I guess my one question, Lou, for, for Bob is, on the arcade, can you bring up just what you would, like, I'm just confused at what you would like to see there versus what's there today? You're unmuted, Bob.
Bob, you are muted.
Hey, I am unmuted now.
Okay.
Okay, so now let me share and let me see if I have an image in the uh, report. Uh, go back. All right, so what's happening here is this pier is one sitting right on the curb.
We're not sharing yet, Bob.
We can't, we can't see it, you'll need to share.
If it's possible to show side by side what they have and what you're looking for, or is that too complicated?
Boy, it's hard to.
Much, much younger to, to do that, Anna, maybe one of.
That's right. I, I need a ten-year-old. I'm sorry, but, but this, this pier face is not in the face of this wall.
Can you blow that up?
Ooh, uh, can I blow that up? Let's see. Um, how do I blow that up? How do I blow that up?
Just to your left.
Control and scroll your mouse.
Lou, I can do it, if, I mean, I can show my image and blow up whatever you want.
All right, well, if Bob can't do it, that would be welcome.
Okay, now how do I stop sharing?
Okay, so.
Thank you, Ray.
So I think the question is that the, the area, you know, of these piers down on the, our partial roundabout is kind of right on the outside edge of the curb, right on the edge of the pavement, and Bob's made the recommendation, you know, can you push those back a little bit, at least to the inside of the curb? And, you know, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
All right, that's part of it, and I'm sorry, now I can't get you back up. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that's the first thing, but then the second thing is that the piers should be in the same plane as the building above. So the, right now, it's off by somewhere around a foot four to two feet, and so that should be pushed back so that they're all in the same plane.
Well, Ray is saying he can do that.
No, no, Lou, you know, so what I'm, so there are two different issues, you know, I'll pull, we'll push the pier back. We prefer not to take this section and that section, push it back the 18 inches or whatever. We have the main focal point of the building, we have that sitting square on that wall, right, on the wall below. And what we're trying to do is trying to frame that out. So we're bringing this piece and that piece out just slightly forward. You know, we're not, you know, it's not this giant projection, you know, it's approximately 18 inches, and what that does is it helps to frame the main entry and main focal point of the building. So, and let me go back to the illustrations for a second, you know, because what's happening is that there are some illustrations which I think are, I take them as guidelines, you know, let's take a look at the illustration for this and the illustration, okay, I understand what they're saying, let's go there. I'm not sure we have to take it as a dimensional guideline. Like, for instance, you know, in the mid-rise illustration where it shows, you know, two buildings, the same building, but after the breakup where you want them to look a little different, the illustration shows the adjacent building with a sloped roof. So I don't think the zoning is saying, oh, the adjacent building, we have to slope, we have to slope this roof. I think they're saying.
Ray, if you're showing the illustrations, we're still looking at the rendering.
I'm not trying to. If you stop sharing, I'll pull that one illustration out.
While they're doing that, just to be clear, we think this is a very, very silly regulation that needs to be looked at, and I think planning and zoning is looking at it.
But you've got one picture of an arcade, and there's a definition of that there, but the arcade, the question is, is does every application that come in front of you have to have, you know, square columns with the base that looks exactly like this, set just slightly off the curb in that way, with a square building directly above, or is it this general style that needs to be replicated as arcade? And we think that what Ray submitted is clearly falls within this arcade definition. It may not match to the T, the picture.
And I'm sure that Ray will agree, and as Bob knows, and I'll tell everybody, I'm an architect as well, that this is about the worst building ever. It's like the ugliest thing you could ever see. So we're trying to take a representative diagram of probably the most ugly building possible and inflict it upon us. It's senseless.
Without trying to get into the subtleties of this, the key to the zoning is it's a typology. It's a solid building that has modest modifications to it. So for example, if we look at this, if this reddish piece of building was all of this one volume, and then you had the bay off to the left, or the shadow was just coming on as the addition or exception to that, and that bay had some visual support underneath it, that would meet the requirements that I see in the zoning. Once you start pulling this piece out, pulling this piece out, and then adding this and adding that, there's no clarity to it. It needs to be clearer. This is much clearer than where we started, but it's not as clear as it can be.
So, Mr. Chairman, I disagree, because again, I think the illustrations are showing intent. And there's a reason, we didn't do it just nilly-willy, you know, there's a reason for doing it. You know, this is the main focal point. It does sit on the wall, and we just want to frame it so that we projected a small dimension forward. And I don't see, you know, I don't see that it doesn't meet the regulations. The arcade is still down here and fully intact. So, and then if we look at every illustration shown, there isn't any illustration shown that wasn't neoclassical or very, very traditional architecture. So does that mean you cannot construct a somewhat more contemporary structure? And so, you know, again, I think they're guidelines, we're following the guidelines, you know, we have an arcade, and, you know, the building sits on top of the arcade, the upper floors are stepped back, and we're trying to create a shadow line on this main focal point of the building. So we're not trying to grab extra square footage, we're not trying to skirt the zoning, we're trying to highlight, you know, kind of the focal point of the building, which again, looks out down that alley to Wall Street.
Thank you, Ray. Steve?
Yeah, I would say that any of those diagrams in there are not meant to be designed fully to look exactly like that, they're supposed to be illustrative of what it can look like. While we want the basic form and function of these buildings to be similar, we don't want every building to be the exact same and look the exact same block style. I think that would become extremely monotonous, so very quickly.
Well, let's, Steve, when we get to the resolution on this, let's see how much can be addressed in the requirements that go along with the resolution.
Yep, sure.
Mr. Chairman, so, you know, I can scroll down and address the kind of the six issues, you know, we and Bob are discussing, and it might kind of facilitate any more discussion or your conclusion on how to handle the resolution.
Ray, feel free, I ask, however, that you do it as briefly as possible. We can actually concentrate on what you're saying.
Right, right, before you start, can you stop sharing for a second, just because, just because I want to actually ground us here. So the six items that we're talking about, this is in your proposed resolution, so 5A, the building facade, this is the one that we've just spent a fair amount of time fighting over whether it's an arcade or not. So the condition, we want this condition removed, or at least to move just the piers inside the curb, but leaving the face as is. The next, and then I'll let Ray take it, but the color of the end block head and sill panels match the window of the trim, so we're just talking about colors. The corner block cornice, this is at the top of the building. There's a string trim, which Ray can talk about, projecting on Isaac Street. And then there's the trim on the windows, whether it's four inches or not, and what that four inches needs to look like. F was the ceramic issue, which we know we're losing that fight, and it will definitely be a condition, but we are encouraging you to reconsider that when you look at the reg rewrites, so that buildings can have something other than a stone or brick first floor. And then the parking structure wall openings, and that was really with respect to the opening along facing 18 Isaac Street, whether that should be just a complete opening, or whether that should have some type of mesh or some architectural feature to make it not entirely open air. And on that one, we, you know, our issue with that was that we did want some light and air into the garage. We didn't want it to feel super closed off, particularly at night, and for cars pulling in that may want to go to 18 Isaac Street, the neighbor there, that if they're able to see it, that's a whole lot better than it being sort of closed off so that they know where they are and where they want to go. This is not like a money issue, because there's really no cost to putting up a little architectural screening there. It is a design thing, and we think it looks good as designed for that. So those are the only issues that we have.
And Mr. Chairman, on that, the one thing I noticed, this is the first that I've seen that resolution, but on the four-inch trim, an important thing is the thickness of the trim. Otherwise, you can get just a piece of sheet metal, paste it up against the building, and said it's, well, it's four inches wide, and that's not going to look right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll run through.
Sorry, Bob, can you say that one more time? I only, I didn't hear the whole thing. Can you say that?
In the resolution, it just specifies the width of the trim and not the depth of the trim. And if you don't specify the depth, then all you're getting is a piece of whatever material you've got could be.
So that's false. That's false for our windows. The windows that we proposed, and I sent details and lots of pictures, maybe.
I've got some photos here.
Yeah, the depth of the trim is five eighths. It's not a flat.
Let me just say, that's not what's in the submission. So you may have it.
I'm not arguing, I'm not an arguer, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll run through these quickly. So we're happy to pull those piers back to the inside of the curb instead of the outside of the curb, and if it means that we pull that whole facade in, that same dimension, we'll do that. We do prefer to accentuate the focal point of the building, so other than that, you know, we like these projections. The end caps, Bob's suggestion was to get these panels, you know, at the heads and the sills to be colored the same. We agree to that, you know, we'll do that. At the top of the building, you know, we've got this kind of built-up cornice piece that is almost four foot six inches tall. And, you know, Bob's made some, you know, dimensional suggestions. I think that he's made a suggestion that this bracket in here takes a different shape, and that maybe there's some, I think, Bob, I think he said maybe a cold molding or something in there. But anyway, when you look at that elevation, we like what it looks like, and we're not trying to, we're not trying to make it look like this neoclassical building. Some of the buildings you showed were beautiful, you know, but that's not what this building is, and that's not what the intent of it was. We think we have an extremely substantial cornice at the top. The, you know, so I wouldn't refer to that as a bay, and so this bottom level is a complete concrete structure. There are plenty of projections on concrete structures, you know, at a two-foot projection, that's nothing for the concrete. And it's not kind of meant to be a bay. What it is, is when you get to this rosewood-colored section of the building, as it terminates, it terminates by bumping this edge out and bumping that edge out. So it just kind of frames it, does the same thing in the back. So we're not saying it's a bay, you know, we're saying it's part of the architecture. Now, I, the reference was this really beautiful bay on a neoclassical building. I mean, it really was stunning, you know, but that's not what this look is, that's not the bay. There's a sidewalk down here, you know, if you want us to come down and take up sidewalk, we'll do it if that's what the requirement is, but I don't think that's, you know, an element of bad design or not meeting the regulations. And I think to be clear to Bob, Bob was saying, look, there's a band of trim here, there's a band of trim here, and he thinks that if that's a bay, that the bay should not form or be terminated, you know, with that same band, it should differentiate. And I think that is a kind of a, you know, a different view on design. I like the way it looks, I like the way it ties together, the way it wraps around, so we're happy with the way that looks, and we don't think we're doing anything that is nonconforming to the zone. So this illustration is over at Willard, you know, Jason has 200 and some units there with a large storage building. But, you know, that's a substantial window, and we're using the same window. You know, if you look at the sash of the window, and then the piece that's outboarded that a little bit, I mean, you know, that's approximately three and a half inches, which is what a four-inch piece of trim is. You know, you can't buy a one-by-four that isn't three and a half inches. So, you know, we think we're meeting the intent. A closer-up picture that not as vivid, you know, again, there's that operable sash, it's recessed a little bit, and then the trim, which I think meets the requirements, is proud of that, it sticks forward. So it's not a piece of sheet metal, it's part of the window, and the way it's manufactured, it's a European window, you know, it's manufactured as part of the window. Quite frankly, I would rather have it as part of the window, you know, buildings always move, settle, you know, and, you know, this is all one piece, you know, sometimes you can get settlement, and sometimes, you know, if you've got a joint here and a joint there and all the trim around the building, you know, you can get movement. So I think we clearly meet the intent, and if anybody has a, somebody could look at Willard if they have a concern, but I think we 100% meet the intent. The next issue is the tile. Now, you know, the tile is a one-inch-thick piece of tile, and, you know, I think if you took the one-inch piece of tile and hit it with a sledgehammer, you could crack it or break it. But that's not the way the tile goes up. The tile goes up, and there's a scratch coat and a metal mesh, you know, it's old-school, you know, attachment, you know, and then there's a mortar-setting bed, and then the tile gets attached. So the tile is attached to the wall. So, you know, if you want to break that tile, you're breaking the wall with it. And a lot of the lower levels of these buildings, particularly our building, with the, in the, the only place this shows the ceramic tile, you know, at 23 Isaac Street, is in the area where the garage is. That's predominantly a concrete structure. You put this ceramic tile with the old-style application, you know, onto that building, it's backed by concrete, you know, it's not going to go anywhere. I think the debate we're having is that it's a material that a lot of people like to use. I think that material is going to come up in coming public hearings about clarifying the zoning regulations. But the debate we're having, I think, is that, wait a minute, the zoning regulation says you can only use these four materials. You know, I think this material is extremely strong, and meets the intent of what we're trying to do, you know. They come in big pieces, you know, it's an attractive solution. So here's a pier over at Willard. So, you know, one little thing is, we'll pull the pier back so it's on the inside, not the outside of the curb, but this is the entrance into the parking garage for a 220-unit structure, and that pier with the porcelain tile cladding is right at the entry. So it's completely exposed, and you could ask Jason, he's had no problem whatsoever with the durability of the product. And that's, I think, what we're looking at. You know, we don't want to put ethos down low, it can get beat up, and it's going to be run down over time. This is an extremely durable, heavy, and, you know, old-world application. The last thing we have is the item of the access or the opening into the garage. So just to clarify one thing, it was brought up that you can't use the word passageway, be careful that this doesn't, you don't say the wrong thing. In our presentation, we never said the word passageway. We said the word on multiple occasions, public realm. That's what we have here. I just don't want somebody suggesting that, gee, oh, is it actually a passageway? It's not a passageway, it's a public realm, and we actually went to staff to clarify that. So back in a matter of hand, these are openings into the garage. So there's discussion about putting, you know, possibly a mesh on that, if that's where we have to go. But one thing that there should be discussed is that there are many segments of society that get very leery in a enclosed parking structure, and there are crimes that get committed there. And, you know, I know we're trying to hide the car, I guess, but everybody here on this call has a car, you know, and we all use the car, and all of a sudden, it's ugly, so it's. it's ugly, so we have to hide it, you know? So it, it, it can create issues because, because there are segments of society who, who are fearful of dark locations like this. It's not dark, it's, it's lit, but there's no light, there's no ventilation, you know, from here, you know, you, you could look out, you know, across the, the, the public realm, the adjacent building. So, you know, you know, I, I, I think this proportion is fine. If, if, if it is asked that we put in a, like a, a metal mesh in here, Mr. Chairman, you know, we, you know, we're happy to, we're happy to put it, we don't think it's necessary, but we'll put it, we just want to make sure it doesn't get too tight. You know, we don't, well, a little quarter inch mesh, you know, we, maybe four inches apart, former grid, because we want the light and ventilation and we want those segments of society who are going to use this garage to feel as comfortable as possible. We're blocking it in from all other areas. So that, that's, that's the, the end of the six-point discussion, at least from our end.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I just suggest with the, with the window trim issue, since what was just presented to you is not what was in the submitted documents, that your requirement be changed, that they submit whatever they're proposing for review?
That's, that, that's fine, Bob. Thank you for that. I want to turn it back to your attorney. We, we need to move this forward.
To try to move it forward sort of expeditiously. We, we have the-
We've lost that opportunity.
Well, from this point, from this point forward, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
So we, we have the traffic engineers here, you have a traffic report that, that this is not going to have an impact. I'm okay, it's not a public hearing, so I don't, we're not sort of compelled to make that record. If there's questions or concerns on traffic, I will absolutely have them do a presentation for you now. If, if none of the commissioners feel that that's needed at this moment, I'm, I'm okay with them just being here to answer questions if further questions arise.
Okay, well, let's, let's get an answer to that. Is there anyone that wants a fuller explanation on the issue of traffic? Okay, so go ahead, move forward if there's the odd question.
So then, then we can, we can talk more about the landscaping in that public realm area. And Earl is here. Again, I'll leave it to you all if you want to hear more about the public realm area. I mean, you've seen that it's a green area, you haven't heard the specifics of it. I don't, I'll leave it up to you if that's what you want to hear at, at 8:15. If you do, great.
I think we'd like to hear it, but we'd like to hear it briefly.
All right, Earl, can you, can you be brief? And then, and then we'll get a couple of words from Jason Milligan and, and we'll call it a night on our end.
Okay. My name is Earl Govan, I'm a landscape architect with Blades &amp; Govan in Fairfield, Connecticut. I'd be happy to run through that. Let me just pull up on my screen the colored site plan and I'll start sharing my screen if I can. So as we discussed pre-, you can all see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so as we discussed previously, the, the majority of the landscape is in the public realm area between 16 Isaac Street and 23 Isaac Street. The landscaping in there consists of, first of all, site furniture, which is consistent with the site furniture located on Leonard and Isaac Street. Site furniture consists of benches, trash receptacles and light fixtures that are the traditional style. Again, that match those on Leonard and Isaac Street. The, the majority of the plantings within the public realm as well as the perimeter of the site are native plants with a couple of ornamentals. The native plants include slender sweet gum, festiget, upright maple, eastern red cedar, inkberry, hydrangea, some sedge, et cetera. So the, the idea is to create a safe environment walking through the, the two buildings. There are three main geometric seating areas that have site lighting above them, that have the benches. The landscaping is kept to the perimeter so that there's a, you know, again, safety, trying not to provide so much landscape, you can't see through there. We still want to have some visibility from one side to the other.
You have, you have an elevation that shows that, so we can get a, a sense of the height of those pieces?
The height of the, the trees?
Plantings.
The plantings. I do have some pictures that I can go through quickly, so the plantings-
Ray, Ray has a, a 3D view.
He does, the plantings aren't, aren't really commensurate with the, the- But just to give you a quick overview, so this is a, a maple tree that we have, it's the Bohals Maple. It's an upright variety that's narrow and tall. And again, we, we, we don't have a lot of space, so we're looking to maximize the height while we're reducing the, the width so that we're not creating too much of a, of a shade situation. We have-
What's the height you're proposing for that maple?
When they go in?
Yeah.
They're typically three-inch caliper, so they're probably 15 to 20 feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
And we can quickly go through some of the others. We have, where we have even tighter space, we have a slender silhouette sweet gum, which is a variety of a, of a, a very narrow variety of a, a native tree. And that is mixed in with the, with the, with the maples. The maples are at the ends and the more slender silhouettes are the five in the middle. We also have inkberry, which gets to be about three or four feet tall. We have some feather reed grass. Again, nothing's too heavy. Feather reed grass, really an accent piece along the foundation. We have some heavy metal, this is a sweet, switchgrass, which is a native grass that we're using in lieu of some of the ornamental grasses we've used, we used to use for this type of project. We have hydrangea, which is up against the foundation in some of the places for accent. And we also have some evergreen, the juniperus virginiana, the eastern red cedar to use for the screening at the, at, at the loading area. We've also got some removable bollards to allow for emergency access to the rear entrance that Ray had described. We also have some protective bollards around the transformer as well as the evergreens protecting that view of the transformers. The backside has some ground covered, some sedge ground cover, Pennsylvania sedge, as well as the switchgrass and inkberry as well and the, the feather reed grass. So without wasting too much time, I think I've gone through pretty quickly the synopsis of the, the landscape plan and I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, attorney, turn it back to you.
Sure, okay. Let me just read a one paragraph and then it'll go to Jason. So this is the letter from, from Ethan Isaac Tarnow, who runs the Factory Underground Studio. We support the proposed development Jason Milligan has presented to the city of Norwalk. Jason has been a driving force of redeveloping the Wall Street area of Norwalk. His passion for the neighborhood has helped build identity, community, and overall excitement for its future. Jason is one of the founding members of the Wall Street Neighborhood Association. The regular meetings have been well-attended from businesses and residents of the neighborhood. He has communicated his plans in these meetings and listens to the local community. He gets things done. So that was, and that's his letter of support. With that, the last word, Mr. Milligan?
Thank you, Adam, and hello, commissioners. I just want to make two quick points. I think that it's probably not appreciated by even the commission, the, this process, the ordinary process probably a bit more, but under the new regulations, we did start conversations with the zoning office, staff, and the TMP and others as we worked through the new regulations a year ago. And the past four or five months, in real earnest, we've had plans. And I want to point out that I've bit my tongue as much as I possibly can, but I hired Ray Sullivan. He has designed thousands of apartments all over the tri-state area. He's, you know, I don't think he needs to work anymore, I think he loves it and it's a passion and he takes projects that he likes. I appreciate his style and I want him to have as much discretion over that style as possible. I think when you have a design review, you're trying to protect against bad design and ridiculousness. Clearly, that's, you know, we, we have talented people with just different viewpoints. Like, I would never wear suspenders. Clearly, Bob would. Does that mean we should all wear suspenders? Should we all design a building? Like, he, he might like certain styles more than Ray does. Totally fine, but are the buildings okay? And I think you guys should wrestle with that and we're more than happy and, and we've given in, I got to tell you, we spent two months giving in way too much and then we said we don't like the building that we're winding up with because the third-party reviewer was sort of dictating where we were going. But obviously, if you approve this with the six conditions that are in there, we will make do or maybe the regs will change a little bit because, you know, I don't like the two-story step back, you know, we haven't talked about that, but I'm hoping that can get amended. But I hope you give as much discretion to the quality architects as possible and not squabble about a two-inch thing that's 70 feet in the air, which is some of the stuff we spent time on. And the last thing I will say, of the design, you know, there are differences in opinion and I, I got to point this out, I have a 17-year-old daughter who's a waitress and she leaves work late and she parks in parking garages. She does not feel safe and I've driven to go pick her up from work, you know, because I don't like where she's parked. And, you know, I think about the story in the Stanford Mall where there was a mom with her toddler in the car seat was raped in broad daylight and it's because it's a closed garage with not a lot of people around. Both design-wise and safety-wise, you want to see the parking, you want to get to the parking. And one of the things, I, the reason why I liked that and read that letter, AudioTronics Building and Factory Underground have zero of their own parking. They're going to utilize the public parking in the area. They've asked and they love that green area and they would like to be able to walk quickly and easily to the public parking, they'd like for it to be obvious. And so they would be the primary people looking at that open side. We'll cover it, but I think there are detriment and I wish the women on the commission or any women in general, if they have an opinion on this, that they would be consulted because primarily it's men that have designed these regs and, and they don't have the same concerns. That's all that I'll say. I appreciate what you do and sorry that we've run a little long here.
Thank you. Adam, you, any final statement?
No, I just, if you, if you have other, you know, questions or concerns, we'll try to address them. Otherwise, we hope that you'll sort of look favorably on the application and approve it and, and ideally without those additional architectural conditions, but we'll, we'll live with your decision.
Are there any final questions? I see some heads shaking. I'm going to read all of that as a no. And in order to get the matter up and running, can I ask for approval of the resolution?
Lou, I move to approve it.
Okay, so Nick has moved, is there a second? This is simply going to allow, okay, and Darius has seconded. This will simply allow us to pull it up and discuss it and make any changes we think are appropriate. Can't read that. Thank you.
All right, hopefully I'm still on, I just got a zoom error. But, okay. So these are the conditions that Adam had mentioned and is taking issue with, so. And then in addition to those changes, we made some modifications since the last iteration of the resolution that we had sent to you. Part of that is just breaking down, there was a, the TMP reference to conditions one through seven on page 15, instead of doing that, we just broke them down into kind of just what those, what they're asking for there, which are all overall pretty minor requests. And then lastly is this highlighted text with, which just goes into how we're going to differentiate an extended stay hotel room unit from what you'd expect to see out of an apartment unit. The reason why we went with 30 consecutive days for a limitation on an extended stay hotel room is because how our regulation is written, a dwelling unit is technically anything that's rented on a monthly or longer basis. So technically, once something is rented for more than 30 days, it, it could be considered a dwelling unit. And then this is just language regarding a parking easement agreement that Mr. Milligan and the city had entered into and it's just kind of reiterating language from, from that.
Brian, can we go, yeah, back to the others? Let's, let's talk about those individually.
I frankly don't have a problem getting rid of all of these, if I'm being quite honest.
So, so the only one I just want to mention is F here. This isn't something we can really budge on at the moment. The requirement within the regulation is that it needs to be brick or natural stone as proposed, I think they were proposing porcelain. That's something where if we're, as we're looking at these regulation revisions, that if we wanted to add that material in, we certainly can. And then the applicant, if this is approved, can come back and, and have that material be changed back to what they are, had proposed.
I, I agree with you, but I also agree with Bob regarding submission of that window. He insists that that's not the window that was part of the original submission. There doesn't seem to be a disagreement there. I didn't hear Bob object to, to what Ray put up on the screen as the window. So I think there it's just a matter of providing that information to the staff. I don't know. We probably ought to reference it in here, but I, I think otherwise that can also come out of these requirements.
And Mr. Chairman, I think they, the applicant's team did agree to the first part of A as well.
Yes, they were going to move the piers at short distance so they're, they're on the inside, not on the outside.
So otherwise, we get rid of B, C, D, E, F stays, G has to stay, H goes away?
Yeah, I think, Brian, can you clarify, redevelopment did have a condition related to H, so I don't know if that, that's consistent with that, because I don't, I think you want to be consistent with what the redevelopment agency said.
We can just reference that approval.
What was the requirement again? Oh, there you go, I'm sorry.
Look.
Are you going to change that language for us, Brian?
Yeah, I could.
Do, I, I, just redevelopment was deferring to you on it, they wanted, they wanted some architectural component to it. They didn't care what?
They, they, they talked about a, 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 a wireframe, not a tight mesh, but just some kind of design component that-
Right, we're not supposed, we're not supposed to be having this conversation with you guys.
Oh, sorry.
Appreciate, appreciate the information, but we have to handle this ourselves.
How about we leave it, Brian, that they submit a revised drawing of that area for consideration by the staff or something and we can, and if we have to, we can bring it back to the commission if absolutely necessary. We're talking about-
Before the redevelopment agency.
And Mr. Chairman, what, what will, we can, I, I have to admit, I am not an expert on the durability of porcelain tile versus natural stone, so we can, we can do some more research in the interim and, you know, during the update process, if, if it's deemed that that's an appropriate material, you can always add that back in and the- And the applicant can come, you know, worst case, come in and get that condition revised to reflect that. So I don't think you have to dwell on it more than tonight, since the condition.
Good, good. All right. Any, any other comments from commission members?
Does the TMP parking need to refer to like the 24/7 access element? Or, or maybe that's it down in the parking easement section? Maybe that's definitive in the parking.
Nick, what are you referring to?
I don't know if in 13 or 14. I remember TMP mentioning that the park, the public parking should be deemed available 24/7. And I don't know if we just need to clarify it here, or if that's just embedded in the parking easement agreements.
Yeah, I think part of it is, Jason has the, as that is already entered into that agreement already. So he already has to sort of abide by it. So it's probably not necessary to put a condition, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Brian, I'm sorry to go backwards. On the one with the architectural design pieces, I think we were just keeping the first half of A, but not the second half of A.
I think that's right.
Tell me where half stops.
That's right.
Exactly 15.5 words.
There you go.
All right, let's scroll down to the bottom, so that.
And then Nick might just need to reaffirm that he's editing his motion.
I reaffirm the motion.
Who seconded?
Darius did.
Darius, you accept these changes?
Yes.
Okay. Then, let's do a roll call on this.
Okay, I can take that for you. Ms. DeBachnick?
I abstain.
Ms. Langalis?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Pachus?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Well, I'm missing, folks. Ms. Lankowski?
I abstain.
Mr. Kanter?
I think this is a really exciting project to help Wall Street and get feet on the ground, so I approve.
Mr. Williams?
There's definitely a lot of positive to it, but I abstain as well.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
Okay, I think you've had, gotta do my math, but I think you've had more than five votes.
I think so, too. All right, thank, thank you all very much. At this point, it's 8:37. We're going to take a 13-minute break and get back together at 8:50 for our public hearing. The next item is a public hearing, 2024-43 SP/CAM 50 Day Street LLC, 165 Water Street, District 2, Block 83, Lot 9, robot competition venue within existing two-story 54,000-square-foot building. And action on this matter. Since this is a public hearing, let me explain how these are conducted. We will allow the operator or their representative to present this project in as much detail as they feel is necessary, during which time, the members of the commission are free to ask any questions they wish. When that presentation is completed, we will open it up to the public for any questions or comments they may have. The staff will explain at the appropriate time how that's done. We ask people who are commenting from the public to give us their names and their addresses. We ask that they be as brief as possible, while making sure they cover any points that are important to them, because they have only one opportunity to speak. When everyone who wishes to speak has done so, we'll turn it back to the operator's representative for response to what they've heard from the public. And once again, during that time, the commission members can ask any questions they like. When that is completed, we will close the hearing and move on to discussion of action. And with that, I'll introduce Attorney Sachi, who I believe is representing the applicant.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And we represent the owner of the property and the applicant, 50 Day Street LLC, along with the National Havoc Robotic League, which was formerly the Norwalk Havoc Robotic League. Present this evening is Austin McCord. He is the owner of 50 Day Street and founder of National Havoc, along with Kelly Eggers-Beederman. She is CFO. We also have online, I believe, tonight, Ryan Saslow of National Robotics. In addition, Will Capel of Phil Serone Architects is present to provide you with some information on floor plans. Peter Romano is present from Landtech. He did the civil engineering work. And certainly, last but not least, is Steve Sopola of Hardisty in Hanover, who conducted the traffic and parking analyses. In addition, you may hear from Mark Chahalas tonight. He is a National Havoc Robotic League Public Safety and Security Consultant. Just some way, some background information and some housekeeping. The application for special permit in coastal area management was filed in July of this year. Neighbors were notified of the submission by certified mailing on July 31st. This commission conducted a preliminary meeting on August 21st. Neighbors were notified of the public hearing by certified mail. Return receipt requested on September 4th. And the packet of certified mail, green cards or letters that were returned, or information on letters that are in transit, was delivered to staff this morning. Lastly, three signs were erected in accordance with your regulations, one on Water Street, one on Barrett, and one on Day Street, notifying neighbors of the date and time of tonight's public hearing. So far, counsel for one neighbor contacted me about questions relating to the number of annual competition events and the days that those events take place. I also received another call from a neighbor who had some very basic questions and wanted some information on the public hearing process and how this application came to be. Lastly, before I forget, there have been three letters of support submitted. Hopefully, that you will read them into the record. One is from Jeff Spar, one is from Steve Pio, and a last quick email was sent from Carol Greenberg. As was mentioned by Mr. Chairman, the application, the applicant before you is 50 Day Street LLC and Havoc Robotics LLC. Property is 165 Water Street, District 2, Block 83, Lot 9. It is in the SDLI zone. It was formerly Industrial 1, and then was changed to Industrial 2. And I'll provide you with some information on that in a minute. The property is 1.85 acres in size. It's improved to 54,000 two-story building, which some of you may remember was occupied by Trudy Toys. And subsequent to Trudy Toys, it was the corporate headquarters of Claps. Mr. McCord purchased this property in 2000 and began, excuse me, in 2020, and began conducting robotics competitions therein. Then we realized that permits were required, but none had been secured. So in order to move forward and keep the competitions going, last year, we obtained a two-year temporary non-renewable permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow this non-conforming use to continue for a two-year period. And that is how this use is operating with permits today. The new regulations that you adopted in December and became effective in February of this year allow, first provided a definition of a robotics competition venue and allowed that use in this zone, the SDLI zone, by special permit. So the application before you, one is a special permit application. The other is a coastal site plan application, because the property is located within the boundary of the coastal area management zone. It is to provide adaptive reuse of the existing building for this robotics competition venue. Office and video control rooms and the first-floor space for the, the actual competition itself takes place on the first floor. The second story, second-story space or second-floor space is dedicated to storage, and it is also robotics repair space, or otherwise known as a pit for those competitors and their robotics that need repair during competition. There are about 90 parking spaces on site. There's no addition plan to the building. There's no change to the building. One of the things that is being proposed is solar panels on the roof. So a little bit about NHRL. It provides a fun, accessible opportunity for people of all ages to get involved in STEM activities in a very creative and safe environment. Now, the Havoc flagship offering is the National Havoc Robotic League, as we said, NHRL. Since its launch in 2018, the league has become the preeminent leader in robot combat, a STEM-based sport originally made popular about 25 years ago. The facility conducts seven to eight competitions each year, always on a Saturday. And they're typically commencing at nine in the morning, run through their various heats. And the final competitions and finals take place later in the afternoon or early into the evening. Competitors travel from all around the world to attend these events. Students who are high school students, college students, who are interested in robotics and STEM, the STEM area, some as spectators, some come as competitors. Norwalk and Darien High Schools, as a matter of fact, have some students that have competed, as have professional engineers from ASML, NASA, Boston Dynamics, and others. The matches take place on the inside and the first floor in eight rings in the existing building. The matches are streamed worldwide from the control room that exists on the first floor as well. Individuals and teams compete. They design the robots, they bring off-site, and then bring them to the site to compete in those eight rings on the first floor. This, this type of activity integrates engineering, math, physics, and manufacturing. There are three weight classes of the competitions. There's a 3-pound, 12-pound, and 30-pound robot. And as I said before, repairs to those robots, if that may be damaged or in some way or another impacted during competition, take place on the second floor in the upstairs pit. Since 2020, when the property was purchased, there have been about 20 competitions, generally seven to eight a year. The property, therefore, is largely inactive during the rest of the year, except for the staff of NHRL, including Kelly Beederman and others. And most of the staff people, many of them come to the site, come to work, and walk from the South Newark train station to the property, which is less than 3/4 of a mile away. In addition to the 90-plus parking spaces that exist on the site, my client has worked out various functional and working arrangements with other property owners in the vicinity of the property. For example, SNU across the street at 164 Water Street allows spectators and competitors to park in the front parking lot. There's about 15 parking spaces there. The Calvary Baptist Church allows parking on Saturdays when it does not need its parking lot for about 25 spaces. Then there are also, there's also 149 Water Street next door, which allows parking in about 50 of its parking spaces. And then there are other properties that Mr. McCord owns or controls on Day Street that offer another 15 to 20 spaces. My client has gone to great lengths to make sure that parking is available in the vicinity of the site. The working relationships with the neighbors have been good ones. They've been ongoing for the past four years without any issues. There are also various municipal parking lots within walking distance. There is one on Avalon Street, as you know. There's Veterans Memorial Park. There's the Maritime Garage, Webster Street Parking Lot, and of course, parking at the train station, all of which are within walking distance to the property. As part of my client's effort to maintain good relationships with its neighbors and provide its spectators and competitors with sufficient information as to where they can park, so we don't have issues in the neighborhood. They provide a map of the nearby lots and the walking distance and time that it takes for folks who will park in those lots to get to the site. Let's see. One other thing that we think is very important, and I think it goes a long way to demonstrating the commitment that Mr. McCord and NHRL have to the neighborhood, is they hire an off-duty police officer on all competition days, so that parking is not an issue in the neighborhood. So neighbors' driveways are not blocked. So there aren't, there's not congestion in the streets. And that has happened ever since the competitions began. They also hire an EMT, and we'll have, you'll hear a little bit about that and what the benefit of that hiring was at a recent competition. The fire department has reviewed this plan. They are on-site during competitions. The state, state police, fire department, or fire division, they have been on-site. We have received the sign-off from the Department of Public Works, from the Water Pollution Control Authority, South Newark Electric and Water, from the Fire Department, City of Newark. We received some comments from TMP, which we are working through. But beyond that, that is the long and short of what takes place, how it takes place, and how this activity has been ongoing in the neighborhood for about four years today. At this point, if you would indulge me, I'd like Mr. Romano to walk you through the site plan. And then he'll be followed briefly by Will Capel, who can share with you the first and second floor plans. And then certainly, we'll hear from Steve Sopola on traffic and parking. So Pete Romano, if you wouldn't mind, screen share, and then I will leave it to you. You're on mute, Pete.
I'm so excited to get talking. I'm just going to share the screen. I got a little site plan that we had done. Our charge on this particular project, there's not a lot of site improvements there. I think I mentioned in our previous meeting, we really were brought on to do the survey work for the, for the site, which you see in front of you. But then there were some site improvements that needed to be implemented in order to bring the site up to, up to the current standards, which really was limited to designating a couple of loading docks. You could see here at the, on the side of the building here, and then an enclosed dumpster. The other part of our task was to identify any coastal resources and describe whether there's any, any impact, any of them. And the particular site is a, you know, a couple hundred feet away from the Long Island Sound. The one coastal resource that really is here on the site is that there's a coastal hazard zone, the entire site. As you probably all know, that whole area down there in the vicinity of Water Street is susceptible to flooding and stuff. And so our site does get flooded during 100-year storms. 100-year storm in that particular area is AE zone. It's elevation 12. Our site's down around eight or nine elevation. Many places, the actual floor of the buildings is somewhere just slightly higher than 11. The, that's kind of it from our perspective. Storm drainage, the impervious areas have not increased. There's no additional drainage. It all gets collected and gets discharged to a fairly large pipe out on Day Street. And some of it goes also on the Water Street. But that drainage, as I think I mentioned before, without getting a lot of the specifics, all the drainage down there in the vicinity of the South Newark and this area are all controlled by the outlets. Outlets, when the stormwater or Long Island Sound comes up, the outlets are covered, and subsequently, the drainage on the site gets detained either in the pipes or in the parking lot until the tides go down. So they, basically, no change. There's nothing to, no way to mitigate this right now. I think Mr. Scholman asked me if there was some way that they could identify the situation for, for people using the site. And I did, I mentioned that there are actually these flood gauge signs. You've perhaps seen them down on the Sawguduk Shores area westward. You see them out on, down a little bit further towards Manreese Island. And there essentially, I've got a picture of one just to show you. There's something that could be potentially installed close to the, to the site, so people could actually. There it is. Can you see that?
Yeah.
And this gives you an idea, you know, when the flood water, it gives people an idea when flood, you know. I don't know if anybody's been involved in something like this, but many times you take a look at, you know, some pondling water and think, maybe I can get through it. This sort of tells you how tall, how high the water is on a particular roadway. So that's, if you wanted to make that a condition of approval, I'm sure we got the approval from the Department of Public Works. Something like this could be installed in the vicinity of our site. Otherwise, in the interest of time, I'm happy to answer any questions. But I, I think that I'm the least interesting part of the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Romano at this point? Okay, hearing none, uh, Will Cable, if you could come on and walk the commissioners through the first and second floor plans. And what is proposed on the roof by way of the solar panels.
Absolutely, um. Let me just pull up my screen. Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Will Cable from Saran Architects at four twenty one Meadow Street and here in Fairfield. Um, what we're looking at now is the first floor of the building. Um, and the front is dedicated to their lobby and production offices. Uh, production space for their live streaming of all events. Um, the rear and bolt of the building is their event space where, as Liz mentioned, there is eight uh, competition rings, spectator seating, um. As well as facilities. Um, off to the side, um, is a deck. Um, where spectators can enjoy a selection of refreshments. Um, that are brought in through, uh, by food truck. And on the second floor, we have the event build space or as it's named, the pit. Um, for uh, repair of robots during the events as well as their offices. Um. Used by the robotic lead. That's about it.
Mr. Cable, can you go back to the first floor?
Absolutely.
Um, where, where are the events taking place?
The events are taking place in this orange space back here.
Okay, and um, there are actual, there are cages there that are used to protect uh, the viewers?
Yes, there are eight um, blast proof cages where these competitions take place.
Thank you.
They are also corded, so you cannot get that close on.
If you'll notice on, on, on the left of the screen, there appear to be um, lines, those, there is, in some areas, there are bleachers. So spectators can watch in the activity that's taking place within those, those rings. And yes, they are completely enclosed, they have to be, it's shatterproof, shatterproof glass. Um, and the fire department is at the site every time there's a competition, just to make sure there are no issues with um. The glass, the flames that may be thrown from some of the robots that compete. But they're all, they all take place within enclosed areas, they're not out in the open for the public to interact with the public. The, the individuals who control the robots are outside those, the rings. But the robots themselves are on the inside controlled from the outside by the, the teams or the individuals who are fighting one another. Any other questions of Mr. Cable? Okay, uh, Mr. Sapola, if you wouldn't mind coming on?
Uh, good evening, uh, for the, for the record, uh, Steve Sapola, Senior Traffic Engineer with Tardissee in Hanover. Licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Uh, we, we conducted the traffic evaluation for the proposed NHRL uh, use at the one sixty five Water Street property. Uh, let me share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen?
No.
Not yet.
Is it showing now?
Nope, no. There we go.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um. So I'll just give the brief um, overview before I get into the details of the, the traffic evaluation. Um, at the beginning of our study, we had discussions with city TMP. And discussed the scope that they were looking for, and based on those discussions, uh, we came up with the following scope. Uh, the first thing was to conduct vehicle counts at all the off-street parking lots during the peak arrival times. Eight to ten o'clock in the morning and peak departures, which are determined to be three to six in the afternoon. Um, the second was to conduct off-street parking counts at all the identified event parking lots. Uh, both during event day and a non-event day. Uh, third was to conduct on-street parking counts within an uh, one eighth of a mile radius of the site. Uh, both during an event day and during the non-event day. Uh, the reason to do an event day and non-event day for the parking counts is to, is to uh, help to determine, you know. What cars are parking for, for the event and what cars are parked there for normal activities. Um. In addition, they asked us to do a person count. Um, which we were able to do uh, by utilizing the ticket sales data and check-in times for the arrival. And we reviewed surveillance videos to count the departure movements. Uh, in addition, um, uh, representatives from our office were out doing field observations during the peak arrivals and the peak departure time periods uh, on the surrounding roadways. And in the, the identified event parking lots. Next slide. Okay, um, so this, this is a figure one from the, from the traffic evaluation. Uh, this shows all the off-street parking lots. Uh, we have the, the two church parking lots. Uh, on the corner of Day and Concord, fifty day. Uh, the property to the north, our front parking lot, the rear parking lot. Across the street, there's parking and then this uh, un- um. Uh, unpaid parking area just to south of the building. So we conducted parking counts in all these lots as well as counted all the access points. Um, during the peak arrival and peak departure peaks. Uh, from the, the driveway counts, we determined that the, the, the uh, Saturday morning arrivals uh, occurred between eight fifteen and nine fifteen AM in the morning, which is generally the uh. Most, mostly the, the competitors arriving for, for the event. Um, and that was uh, a hundred and twenty-six total vehicles. Uh, the afternoon departure peak occurred uh, between four thirty and five thirty with a hundred and sixty-six vehicles total. And then this is table three from our traffic evaluation. Uh, this shows uh, the uh. The total off-street parking demand. Uh, this column here is for the, during the event day on March second. And this, uh, these columns here are the non-event day taken on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the peak parking demand occurred uh, between three and four o'clock. Uh, with a total peak parking demand of seventy-eight percent. Uh, compared to a non-event day, which was at sixteen percent. Uh, so there's a net difference of twenty, uh, two hundred and twenty-two spaces um, between the event and non-event day. And then this is figure two from our traffic study. Uh, this uh, shows the quarter, uh, eighth of a mile radius. That were, uh, TMP uh, had us uh, look at. Uh, so we looked at all the block faces within this uh, this radius of the site. Um, and we conducted the, the parking counts uh, through, throughout the, the, throughout the day from nine AM to six PM. And similar to ta- uh, table three, table five shows the, the on-street, uh, oopsie. I apologize that this is, yeah, it shouldn't be, uh. It's on, not on-street parking lots, it's just on-street parking, it was a typo in our study. But uh, for on-street during the event day. Uh, we had a peak parking demand that two, from two to three of eighty-one percent, a hundred and twenty-seven um, vehicles. And that's uh, the part, that's the total parking in the, uh, in the whole study area. During the non-event day, during the same time period, it was sixty-two percent or ninety-six vehicles. So there was a difference of about thirty-one vehicles between event day and non-event day. Um, gen- generally, uh, when we look at parking, uh, both uh, on-street and, and parking lot. Generally, we design for a peak parking demand of ninety percent or less. Um, for the, as, as you can see, for on-street parking with the event, we're at eighty-one percent peak parking demand. And I'll just go back to the one before. And our off-street parking lot, uh, we're at seventy-eight percent, so um. So we're uh, within the ideal uh, peak parking demand. Um, on the day of the event, uh, based on um, based on the, the date, ticket sale data. That there was a total of uh, six hundred and thirty-six people. And uh, reviewing of the data, not all six hundred and thirty-six people arrived in a short period of time, that's uh, generally, you know, spread out throughout the day. Uh, what we found is attendees come and go throughout the day, which helps to reduce uh, the impacts to boat traffic as well as parking. So these type of events are not, you know, similar to like, uh, like another sporting event, like a, you know, baseball or football where all the people come to, you know, at one time to watch the game and then, and then leave all at the same time. Uh, the way that um, uh, these events occur and what we saw in our field observations is, you know. You know, general, uh, general uh, flow of people in and out throughout the day. It's not a, like a big spike of people entering and exiting the site uh, in an hour. It's pretty even, it's pretty spread out throughout the uh, the, the event, which is, it's a pretty, it's pretty long, it's about um, eleven to twelve hours, so it's pretty much the whole day. Um, based on our field observations, as well as the, the parking counts uh, that were done, you know, on the event day and non-event day. Uh, indicated that the surrounding uh, roadway, on-street parking as well as the off-street parking supply. Are sufficient to handle uh, these events that occur seven to eight times a year and they occur on a Saturday. Um, based on our field observations, the, the background volumes on the surrounding roadways are relatively light. And the, uh, any increase in traffic due to these events, um. Did not, uh, we did not see any, you know, adverse impacts on operation or safety in the general vicinity of the site. Um, and also as attorney such noted, uh, there is an off-duty police officer who is onsite and who also uh, travels the surrounding neighborhood to make sure that there's no issues with, you know, safety or parking, double parking. Uh, based on our field observations, we didn't see any, you know, spillbacks onto the road from parking lots or any double parking. Everything operated uh, very smoothly and, and very safe. Um, on the day of the event on um, the March second that we looked at. Um, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the capacity, a number of people who are gonna go to the events and or the operations of the event. Um, from what's currently being used, so the data that was collected on this day, you know, was typical for, you know, the other, you know, seven to eight events, you know, throughout the year. Um, we received TMP comments dated eight, uh, August ninth and August twentieth. Uh, we provided responses to all those comments. Um, and our let, responsive comment letter dated September sixth. Um, if there's any questions.
Oh yeah, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Hi, uh, so, so thank you so much for detailing um, the parking situation and also that there will be a map to um. To instruct um, participants as to where to go. I, I can't help but thinking, is, is parking tied into the price of admission or are you also charging an additional fee for parking?
Um, I'd have to leave that up to the applicant.
There, there's not an extra fee for parking, the admission is the admission to attend the, to come in and attend the event. So there's not a, a parking uh, charge uh, that's, that's separate or, or added in. The price of admission is price of admission, if you walk in, take the train and walk to the site, you pay the fifteen or twenty dollars, whatever the, the fee is. Uh, you don't have an, an add-on for that. I'd just like to add a few things to what Steve was suggesting and in his analysis. Couple of things, first, there's no on-street parking on Water Street. There's no on-street parking on either the north or south sides of Concord Street from Water to Day Street. Um, there's limited parking on um, Day Street, but it's north of the intersection of Con- Concord and Day Street. Right adjacent, or I should say the, just to the north of this facility on Day Street, there is no parking. There is parking on both sides of the street, on Day Street from Concord South to Barrett. And honestly, from the intersection of Concord and Day Street, westbound to Woodward Avenue, South Main Street. Where Calvary Baptist Church is located, it's not clear if parking is or is not allowed on that street. There do not appear to be any no parking signs on either side of the street, but uh, the few times I was there, there were very few cars parked on the other side. So there are some restrictions as to where uh, contestants and spectators can park on the street and it's, it's limited. So they do take advantage of the various parking lots, they do take advantage of on-street parking that's at Raymond or up the street on Day Street. But in the general vicinity of this site, particularly in front of it, there is no on-street parking. In addition, as, as indicated in our application, Wheels Bus number nine travels right in front of the property. It comes down South Main, it makes a right turn onto Barrett, and then there is a stop at Barrett and War- and Woodward. Their bounce is right around the corner. That bus runs on Sunday, on Saturdays, when the competitions take place. And as I looked at their schedule, it appears it runs about every half hour. So there is a public transportation running directly in front of the site. There are also other Wheels Bus routes that operate in, in the vicinity, but not directly in front of the site. So there is ample public transportation as well to get people to and from the site and other sections of town.
Thank you. So um, I, the, the, the reason I ask that question is, as a participant, as a participant, participant myself. I would look for, seek out um, parking um, areas, you know, free parking. And so you have some lots that you're not charging parking for and others that you are. Is that clear representation?
Well, we're not, we can't charge anything for the municipal lots. If someone parks in one of the city lots, whatever fee would be uh, charged to them, that is, that is oblig- that's their obligation to park the city lot and pay that, whether it's Webster Street or Haveland or the Maritime Garage. The lots that we uh, have working relationships with at Calvary Baptist, SNU, there is no
Yeah, I, I see the list here.
There's, there's charge for someone, there's no one sitting at the, at the entrance to those lots and taking ten dollars to park there for the day.
Yeah, I, that, that was a concern, um. Uh, all, all, because I'm just wondering, you mentioned a police, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Will Cable, he mentioned a police officer. They are the, right, and, and so is there police present at all of these lots?
No, there's police presence at the main one sixty-five Water Street. But then that officer's responsibilities are to drive around the neighborhood to be sure that cars are not blocking private property owners' driveways, are not uh, double parked on the streets, are not improperly parked in parking spaces. But there are not police officers, um, specifically at these offsite lots, they're, they have not been hired to do that. Their goal is to keep the site operating, to keep the site safe and to keep the neighborhood around it pre-flowing so that there is no impact to the neighbors and their ability to use their streets to get in and out of their driveways, whether that be residential properties or businesses in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Sure, I think so far it's, it's worked rather well. Um, I, we haven't, at least I haven't, nor has my client received any issues, complaints, concerns or um. Comments from those saying, you're, you're blocking my driveway or I can't get in and out or people are double parked. However, if any of those were to be brought to our attention, I think you can rest assured that given the, the extent to which uh, Mr. McCord and his team have gone to make sure that traffic flows freely, that their concerns and issues will be immediately addressed.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you have no other questions of Mr. Sepola at this point, I don't know if Mr. McCord or Ms. Peterman would like to share any comments or or make any statement. You can
Liz, I have a question for you. As and if this becomes more popular, it it seems to me it's at least conceivable that you reach a point at which there may not be sufficient parking. Does the organization have the ability or the willingness, if it becomes necessary, to limit attendance at at these programs?
Well, I think in I I'll defer some of that, the answer to either Kelly or Mr. McCord. But the the building itself is limited by the fire department maximum occupancy. So the there are only eight cages inside. There's only a certain amount of people that the fire department will allow. And they're there with a counter, making sure that we're not over occupancy. The other thing is the events take place on Saturdays because the individuals who compete and those who attend either work during the week or go to school. So it's it's not something that would happen during the week. Should there be more events on weekends? That would be have to be something that Mr. McCord and Ms. Peterman will have to handle. But I think they've they've demonstrated that they certainly can do that. Not only by the ninety-three spaces on-site, site parking that's in the general neighborhood on-street, but also their interactions and arrangements that they've made with other property owners in the neighborhood. And I might add that the that also goes both ways. Some of the property owners that allow us to park on Saturdays, when available on their site, they've also used our site if they have some over-parking needs for whatever event they may have, such as the Baptist Church.
Thank you.
Mr. McCord, I don't know if you want to add anything or Ms. Peterman, if you feel like doing anything, we've left anything out at this point.
I mean, I I think we've covered everything. I I just think like, you know, our goal is to continue to try to make the sport as accessible as possible to people and really excited by the growth of the sport and what it brings to Norwalk. And, you know, we're happy to be here in Norwalk and it's amazing to do something that has a truly global reach from right downtown.
Hey, at this point, that basically concludes our presentation to you. We'd just like to hold a couple of minutes at the end, show there be any need for rebuttal. And also just to make some closing statements, closing comments.
Okay, before we open it up to the public, any final questions from commissioners? All right. If not, Steve or Brian, would one of you explain to the public how
Sure.
How to participate?
Sure, I can take it, Brian. Brian may be busy with bedtime chores as well.
Right.
We'll do that. So nobody by phone, so use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen if you wish to talk. We do have two people right now with their hands raised, Mr. Chairman, so I can allow them to talk. And then we'll see where we go. Okay, Diane, you're unmuted.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, the Commission, the applicant, and there's the staff helping. For the record, my name is Diane Loricella. I live in twenty-one Little Fox Lane. And I am, I decided to speak tonight late in the evening to offer my support for this application. I say, let's find a way to help this, have Robot League stay on Water Street and in Norwalk. Because they're combining a love of teamwork with a love of STEM learning and teaching participants to think outside the box. They make science and engineering accessible and exciting. And as an environmental scientist, I really appreciate that. I am very interested in hearing a little more about the potential for solar on the on the roof or ground mounted. Mr. Cable, I think, got caught up and didn't mention that, but it would help them reduce their operating costs besides being a more progressive thing to do. Lastly, I just wanted to suggest that there be some, and maybe you've already thought of this, I didn't see it in the application, but the putting up floodgates. I'm friends with the the church up the street, Calvin Baptist, and they, under Hurricane Sandy, I believe it was, they their community building was devastated by the rising, and it wasn't not even on a high tide. And the reason I'm just suggesting this, I know it's an extra expense, but that would allow you to recover faster so that you could continue the great work that you all are doing. I am very pleased that Mr. McCord and his team have decided to remain in Norwalk and invest in Norwalk. And I think this is a terrific type of commercial use that we need more of. And so I hope you will approve this application. Just mention something about the solar and the floodgates. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Spar, you are muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I had written in a letter last time and then also this current time, but I wanted to actually take the time to make some comments. I'm a longtime Norwalk resident, lifetime resident. My father and my mother were lifetime Norwalk residents, and we've been here for a long time. And I think this is amazing for the city of Norwalk. I'm also the proud father of a young man who has ADHD, is on the autism spectrum. I was president of the Connecticut Association of Children with Learning Disabilities, and I'm a presently gubernatorial appointee on the Connecticut Special Education Advisory Council. I know that my son loves this stuff. I was always looking for opportunities to to bond with my son to do things. I know when I was growing up, my dad would come home and we would play catch in the yard. Or we'd go to some kind of sporting event. My son wasn't interested in that. So he and I found mutually mutual interest. I would look all over the place. We, every year, I'd take him up to PAX East in Boston, which is, you know, a video game place. We went out to MineCon in California. We would go down to the Smithsonian Museums in Washington, DC. I would take him to the S sixteen train and the Trolley Museum. We would do all these different things, looking for all these stimulating types of activities. By coincidence, he actually also would go to the Makers Guild, where they would have some activities that would go on. And it was through that that one day I heard about this event. And I said, this sounds like right up our alley. Where you know, where could this be? Because I had seen like a link to like a Facebook page, I think it was, and then the website. And come to find out, it was right in Norwalk. I was dumbfounded. I'm like, oh, my God, this is amazing. This is just what I'm looking for, and it's right here. So I went a couple of springs ago and I went and I went in to see the the event. I didn't know what to expect. I I knew the old class building and Trudy Toys. I went down there. Let me add, I had no problem finding a parking place. And I went in there and I was just dumbfounded. When you walk in there, there's a lobby right there. The people are the nicest people in the world. Right to the right, there's this video room where they're doing all the monitoring of the events that are going on. You would think that you were like in an NBC control room. And you walk into this little lobby, they have they have like these little museum pieces of all these like robots, combat robots that have been in the TV shows, and you get a chance to look at them. And they have little plaques you read. There's a little gift shop. And then you walk into the back. And there's all these different cages that have these little type, they have these little bleachers that are right there in front of them. But each one of them has a TV in front of it. So if you're sitting in front of Cage One, you can also see what's going on in front of Cage Four. People are constantly moving. You're not stuck in one place. There's things to eat, there's things to drink, and you go out into the back patio, as mentioned. They have some food trucks, plenty of seating. It's just amazing. It's it's really, really just amazing. And it's 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 exciting. I have to say, it's exciting. And when I went in there and you see all these kids and their parents walking around and their eyes are wide open as if they're seeing Santa Claus, like they're going to see Santa Claus, it's just amazing to see how they do it. And over a period of time, I've just seen how it's increased with these different STEM teams coming in from all the different places. I've met people from Florida. There's a Worcester Polytech has a group that comes down. There was a team from Brazil that came in. I met some guy that drove in from Indiana just to be there, just to be there to watch it. The the thing that's also amazing, it's a participative event. It's participative entertainment. You know, look, I can go watch and watch the New York Giants and New York Jets play, and I know I'll never be on that field. But these kids go down there, they can just, following week, they can go to their classes and all of a sudden start building this stuff, and they can be out there. That's the amazing thing. It's so enticing that they can be there. It encourages like the viewers to be involved, just because you're you're right there. You're up front, close and personal. You can talk to the people. Also, the interesting thing is they have like this play-by-play announcement that's going on. They have like this team of announcers. And you would, I mean, when I was growing up, we had Howard Cosell and Dandy Don and Frank Gifford. But they had these guys that are sitting up there. They're giving a play-by-play. It's it's just amazing, and it's all on the TV and everything like that. And they're they're highly accessible. You can talk to them during a break. They have the cameras going around viewing everything. And I said, the the people that are the contestants will come up and talk to you. It's just mentally stimulating. You know, I know like my son had gone to a school Chapel Haven in in New Haven. He was part of the ASAT program, which is the Asperger Syndrome Adult Transition Program. They had a busload of kids from the school come down, and they were accommodated with a handicap parking space right in front. You know, by making arrangements, there was no problem for them to find parking. As far as the parking also goes, I would add, as far as that, we also have Wheels to You now, the transit district. In addition to the Wheels Bus, you have the Wheels to You that would be able to take somebody. Also, the police headquarters is a stone's throw away as far as police being available if there was any traffickers and they could immediately respond. In addition to that, there's also the possibility of having a shuttle going from Vets Park right across the bridge, right to the place should it ever grow that big. Another thing I would say is, my son's interest was so keen that he expressed an interest in actually working there. And I want to say thanks to Ryan Saslow, who's there. Ryan was very accommodating. And my son had a job working there. And he just felt like right at home, so welcomed, so everything. They gave him a shirt. He felt part of a team. You have no idea for a son like my, for a person like my son to feel part of a team, to feel, you know, social connections, rather than looking at things on a screen. This is the thing. These kids these days, they're looking at stuff on the screens all the time. They're just like playing with like a little wand or they're playing with their, you know, their their mouse other thing. This is the kids that are getting there and they're actually doing this stuff. And my son was actually part of it. He wasn't a contestant, but well, we did buy a kit from the gift shop to have he and I go to combat, but that's another story. But it's just an amazing thing. If you go online and you look at the website, you look at the Facebook page, it's such a first-class operation. And I have to say, and oh, one thing, I'm not getting paid for this. I just want to, this is being a native Norwalker with a son who has a high interest in tech stuff. This is an amazing thing for the city of Norwalk. People come from all over. The other thing too is, if you have all these kids that are coming from Weston Wilton, you know, locally, okay, not just to compete, just to watch, they're going to come down and they're going to see Washington Street. They're going to go, whoa, I didn't know there was all these stores here. I didn't know there was all these restaurants here. They're going to see Vets Park, and they go, what? You mean you can just launch a boat from here? They're going to see the different yacht clubs. Oh, I can just do this right here. This is just amazing. Oh, they're going to come right by the mall. Wow, the mall is right here, right off the Route Seven connector. This is crazy. This is like the best place to come down. So it's just going to keep on building and building and building. So for all those reasons, for the excitement, for the being like, you know, a great thing for the city of Norwalk and mostly for the kids, mostly for the kids. All you need to do is walk in there and just feel the excitement. It's electric. And I would, as you could tell, I'm firmly supporting the continuation of this event in Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was that was intense.
I feel it.
Thank you so much for the kind words, Jeff and Diane. We really appreciate it.
Steve, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
There's no other hands raised from the audience at this point in time.
All right, then we'll turn it back to Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing, if Mr. Romano could just address the concern raised by Ms. Loricella regarding flood vents. And then we have, I have a two-minute wrap-up since there's nothing really to rebut, and the hour is getting late. Peter?
Sure. Pete Romano, Atlantic. I think what Diane was referring to is things called flood panels or flood curtains. I don't know if Norwalk has them, but Westport has them on all the front doors and windows and even some of the windows that go down to the ground. And it's it's it works. It's usually lightweight aluminum. You put a a channel on either side of the door and you slide this in. It works well when there's obviously a person on site, you know, maintenance man or somebody that's in the building. And when a storm's coming, they slip these, they can slip these panels into the into the channels and they work. They've worked down in Westport. The whole downtown is pretty much underwater when the when the tides rise. And I'm sure that Mr. McCord's dad can tell him how to do them because he's also a very good civil engineer.
Yeah, he's retired. He's got time on his hands now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Romano. Thank you, Mr. McCord. Just to wrap up everyone, this applicant, the applications were submitted under the new regulations. Robotic competition venue is a use that's allowed by special permit. And we believe that this use and the proposal and the plans comply with sections four-point-three-point-nine-A, four-point-three-point-one-dash-L, six-point-ten-point-one, and eight-point-four-point-G, eight-three, excuse me, eight-point-four-point-eight-G of the new regulations. All of the standards of review that are set forth in special permit application have either been met or exceeded. And that is density of buildings, provision for ingress and egress, availability of mass transit, availability and compatibility of utilities and all the others that are set forth in the special permit requirements. Lastly, I don't want to, I don't want to be neglectful and not indicate that, as I said earlier, the property is within the coastal area management zone. And we believe that this adaptive reuse of an existing building for the use contemplated will have no adverse impact on coastal resources to the east, namely the Norwalk River, which is separated from us by developed properties, curbed sidewalks, parking lots, buildings, and other areas that have already been disturbed or improved. For all of the for all of the information submitted to you, the testimony submitted tonight, support that we've received, we hope that you will find it fit to approve this at these applications this evening. And we look forward to working with the city continuously on the Norwalk, the National Havoc Robotic League, and hope that its successes continue. If there's any other questions of me, Mr. McCord, Ms. Peterman, happy accident.
Liz, can you, I think Mr. Ruchel also asked about the solar on the roof. If you can hit that quickly. I don't remember if we, did we hit that already?
I believe that we do have provision for solar on the roof. Will, I, Will, do you have that plan? I I know we mentioned it in our moving papers that we were going solar panels on the roof.
I'm sorry, I did not have that plan.
Okay, then I'm sure that would be a condition of approval, but that was something that we had contemplated and set forth in the application itself that we would implement.
Awesome. Thank you.
If there's an issue with it, if there's some problem with the roof or there's some other matters that make it difficult or infeasible, we'll come back to you. But we had, we had presented that as part of the application.
Any final questions for Attorney Sachi before we close the hearing? All right. If not, then we'll close the hearing and move on to action.
Motion to approve.
Is that you, Nick?
Yep.
All right, Nick is
I can second that.
I'll second. And, okay, and
With both hands.
Seconded. Let's pull that up.
I'm not sure how many other folks have gone, but I know I've gone a number of times with Henry and Elliot, and it's just been a great, great time. So I want to thank the applicant and Mr. McCord as well for being here in Norwalk. It's a true gem.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it really puts Norwalk in the map.
Thank you. We're definitely excited about helping raising our profile.
I'm the one that put in that number seven, limiting the number of events. But I would remind the applicant that should you are planning call for more, you're welcome to come back and ask for that number to be adjusted upward.
Noted. Thank you.
Right, is the solar condition on there? Do you, I can't recall off the top of my head. I don't, I didn't see it. You could probably just add at the rooftop, solar to be installed as per the applicant, something like that, quick.
And again, I assume, Steve, that, you know, should they find, for example, that the roof can't support it, they can come back to us.
Correct. Yep, in this, in this case, yes.
Okay. All right. Any, any questions about the resolution? Any change, any further suggested changes? Nick, we should ask you and
I accept the changes.
Okay, and Hector, change is acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Certainly. Ms. Langalis?
Yes.
Ms. Tabachnik?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight and your attention. We appreciate everything that you did and look forward to working with you again.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the zoning regulations revisions.
I don't think we have anything in particular to discuss with you, Mr. Chairman, unless you wanted to go over something that, the materials that you submitted. The only other thing we've been working on is we did have a request from the waterfront clubs to take a look at the zoning for how they're handled, just because they're all in residential zones and a lot of the standards are nearly impossible for them to comply with, so they want to see if they can get some relief from those as opposed to trying to seek variances for everything. So we're working with some, some minor tweaks on that, and we'll show you at your public hearing in a couple of weeks.
Okay, at that public hearing, by the way, that's a reminder, that's October 2nd. I assume that we are, we're, we're going to have a fair, a fair amount of public comment, some of which is going to be new to us. I'm wondering if it's likely that we're actually going to be in a position to vote on these changes on the second, or if we'll have to defer it until our second October meeting.
We don't even have it noticed that you are taking any action, so you don't have to worry about it. So.
Okay, good. Fine. Next item is approval of the minutes of our September 4th meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, JJ has moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, Hector has seconded. Just a show of hands. All those in favor?
I abstain. I wasn't present.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Comments of the director? Steve?
Only thing, I, I think, you know, we're, we are, the chairman has been pushing me for training for a long, long time, so I've been remiss in that, getting that moving a few times. So just thinking about abstentions on applications, especially site plans and subdivisions, I, I question whether that's an appropriate vote on those kind of applications. I think if you have a question about whether something complies with the regulations or the site plan criteria, we should probably discuss that before the vote is taken, but I think the abstention is, might not be the appropriate vehicle.
Is there a regulation about when abstentions are and aren't allowed and in what circumstances?
That's a good question. We can kind of pull something together on that. I mean, typically with like a special permit, you might be more conflicted because you have more leeway and more, you know, the, some of the criteria related to a special permit is fuzzy is not the right term, but it's not concrete as opposed to site plan. It's, does it meet the, does it cause a traffic problem? If the evidence in the record is no, it doesn't cause a traffic problem, you really have to go by the evidence and the record at that point in time.
But then why put it to a vote if it's, if it's not black and white, if there's no discretion? I mean, real people are being asked to think about what's been presented and look at a regulation and see if it matches up at the level of discernment. Right? Otherwise, you wouldn't have real people do it.
Well, I think that.
Some might agree, and some might not agree, and some people might not feel they have enough information to make that decision.
I would say if you have a, you know, testimony in the record from the qualified professional that indicates that something complies with the regulations, that's the testimony you need, need to rely on.
And I would say, if you don't feel you have any information, that a no vote would be appropriate.
Right. That, that's the alternative. You could vote no and said, I feel it doesn't comply, and then state your, your reasons why. I think that's always good for the discussion because you know, that it wasn't the issue tonight, but it does pop up time to time that you have appeals on applications, whether it's approved or denied, and it's good for the record to indicate why you came to the conclusions you came to. So that's always important to have.
I definitely appreciate seeing some sort of regulation about the use of abstentions in site plans versus site plan reviews.
Yeah, I'm thinking in my mind, there's a couple of topics, like one is like freedom of information is a big one that needs to get hashed out, just about, you know, ex parte communication, document receipt and those kind of things. And then another one is just like the, what we were just discussing, like you have a, what, what's the commission's role in a site plan application, in a subdivision application, in a special permit application? How are you supposed to be dealing with that, interpreting information, how, and you know, how do you conduct your deliberation? So I think we'll, those are the two areas that I, I think are the most important for us to consider.
Is that it, Steve?
That is all.
Okay. Between now and our meeting on October 2nd, the nominating committee, which is myself, Darius, and Richard Rowan. At the end of that meeting on the 2nd, we will present a slate of officers for you to vote on, and also accept any nominations that people wish to make above and beyond those that we're nominating. I would suggest that if you're interested in serving as an officer, please let me know sooner rather than later so that we can consider your name. That's it for me. Tammy?
Yes, thanks, Lou. I guess addressed to Steve. Somebody from, you sent around something about a freedom of information event. Was that just FYI, or is that something that you are recommending that the commission members attend?
It, it wouldn't hurt. You don't have to. It's, CCM is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and Norwalk's a member, so you can go to those events. It's, I believe there's no charge for any of that. You just have to register. So that that particular training was something geared towards land use commissions and commissions, so I felt that, you know, pass it on if you, if you have the ability to attend.
Okay. Is anybody else on this board going to that?
It's a Zoom meeting at the moment.
Yeah, attending the Zoom.
At the moment, it's an hour and a half, as I recall. At the moment, I'm intending to attend.
I will too.
All right. I'll see if I can put it in my calendar.
Good.
To check my schedule.
Okay. It's, I'm sorry, Steve, can I ask you one other question? You know, on the, on the proposed revisions that you sent around? Just really quickly, on, on page two, it's under impervious surface coverage. We discussed, you know, for lot building site area less than 6,250 square feet, building coverage 35%, impervious surface coverage 50%. And I think we talked about how that sort of implies that that's 85% lot coverage, and that that needs to be clarified. But these red markups were the clarification, were they not?
I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the document open, but the intent is that, just to make it, and that was one point I was going to try to hammer home at the public hearing when we just kind of walked through the big changes to go over, was that impervious surface coverage also includes building coverage. So it's not, you know, it's not cumulative. It's, you don't exceed the impervious regardless of how much building you put.
Sure. So maybe the word total could be added in front of impervious. Total impervious surface coverage 50%.
Yeah, and or, and you know, another way to approach it would be if it's not clear on the definition of, of impervious surface coverage to include, so it says building, so that way you can just say, well, look, it's, the definition says buildings as well.
Right. Okay, I just don't want somebody to think that they can cover 85%.
Yeah, we will, I will try to, yeah, anyway, I 100% agree, and any way we can make it as clear as possible is what we'll do.
Okay. And during that public meeting, are we going to go over every single one of these things?
I had no intention of doing that. I was, Brian and I are going to sit down Monday next week and go through what we flagged as kind of the more complicated and bigger changes, and, and talk about those in a presentation, and, but not go through, we're changing page 11 to say the versus then, or that kind of stuff.
Okay, good.
Okay. And I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, Hector has moved, and JJ has seconded. All those in favor? We are adjourned. See you all October 2nd.
Yep, that's, and that's in hybrid, or, yeah, I think the intent.
I, I will be there in person.
Okay.